I call to order the September 27th, 2021 City Council slash successor agency to the redevelopment Agency slash Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
Republic. For which it stands.
It stands. One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Item three is changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes?
No changes this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then, moving on. Item four, report from closed session.
Madam Mayor, there's no report from the closed session tonight.
Okay, moving on again. Um, item five is council communications and announcements. City communications and announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regulating upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are information, they are informa- Ah! Infom- In- Informational, finally. Informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Okay, um. Are there any?
So Mayor Fisher, I'm seeing Vice Mayor McDowell has her hand up.
Okay. Uh. Uh, Sarah McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am just so thrilled to have you here tonight, and you're just doing a great job. I wanted to let you know that right off the bat. Um, what I wanted to tell you, Madam Mayor, and my colleagues, is that, as some of you may know, I represent, well, I sit on the Board of the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust, and Ron knows that group very well. And I just wanted to share something that we worked on last week where we approved assistance to a Mid-Penn Housing Project in San Mateo. And it's a 225-unit, 100% affordable rental housing project. It's a great project that will house individuals with developmental disabilities, formerly homeless households and public employees. And I just wanted to point out this really exciting project, given our upcoming discussion this evening on housing. And I wanted to note that the total development cost per unit for this project is about $750,000, including parking. Excluding the parking, the cost per unit is $665,000. So the total development cost for this building of this project, this 225 units, is $169 million. And I just, I thought that that was a really important data point to share with my colleagues and the public tonight as we embark on a housing discussion. Thank you. That's all I have tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the- For that. Are there any more? Okay, I don't see any more hands, so moving on. Um, next on the agenda is public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the, if the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posted as allowed under the Brown Act. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for a more comparative action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, is there anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have two hands up. First one is Heather. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, is there any video associated with this?
I'm sorry, what was that?
When we do this Zoom, is there any video associated with this?
No.
Okay, I had come prepared with video prompts, so, okay. My name's Heather, and I work for a property owner that's adjacent to your 817 Walnut property. And the reason why I wanted to speak this evening, is I know that you have a housing development discussion later on, but I don't know if the city or the planning commission is aware that there have been changes to the plans for the building that were brought to our attention by the contractor last week. If you walk past the building on Olive Street between Laurel and Walnut, you will see raw concrete mason unit block. And on the plans that were approved by the city and plans by the planning commission, the materials on the side of the building were supposed to be brick facade or stucco on the second sort of higher elevations. And our concern is that apparently, according to the contractor, the raw concrete without any finish on it is going to be the final material. And my understanding is that based on the co-compliance certificates and things that were approved previously through public comment, we looked meticulously at how the impact to the neighbors, to the people around the surrounding area, and the fact that the contractor or the city, whomever it might have been, the fact that the raw concrete is going to be allowed as the final material we have concerns about. So we know that you folks want to have the marquee, you know, affordable housing, but we don't think that changing the materials and the final product after public comment and after approval by both the city and the planning commission should be acceptable. And if you walk past, it looks as though it's, it literally is a material that has not been finished. So we hope that you folks follow through to make sure the contractor puts on the facade that was approved.
Thank you. Mayor Fisher, if I may, might I ask staff to follow up with Heather? And Heather, if you could send the city clerk your email address and/or contact information, that would be helpful. I see, Jeff, you're bringing on your video.
Yep, just to say thank you very much for that, and we'll be happy to do that and look into the issue.
Thank you.
Is there anyone other person wishing to speak?
Yes, uh, looks like Sonia Elks has her hand up. Sonia, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, for taking my comment in City Council. I just wanted to, uh, express that I have some concern about, uh, something Public Works is planning for, I think, four or five more, or moving toward putting in more concrete bulbouts along Melundy this time, and I have concerns that we are going to be, um, making it difficult for bikes to move through this area with the rise in popularity of e-bikes, Melundy is, and scooters, Melundy is not a challenge for these micro-mobility devices to get through. If we want to encourage micro-mobility, we need to make sure that they can get through our streets and not, um, put bulbouts that are, um, are not passable for bicyclists and micro-mobility users. So, um, I just wanted to express that my dismay and concern, um, that that seems to be happening again. Um, there's many ways to, uh, to do with paint or with, um, with reflective posts to make it safer for pedestrians to cross, and I can send information and pictures by email, but I wanted to express that I have serious concerns about this happening on Melundy.
Thank you, Sonia. Um, and here again, Mayor Fisher, if I might, if I may, Jeff, could I ask that staff please follow up with Sonia on this item?
Uh, we can reach out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Who else?
There are no further hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, uh, moving on. Item seven is the consent calendar. Are there any items council would like to pull?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
And I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
And I second it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, Crystal, uh, Madam Mayor Fisher, if we could have perhaps City Clerk call the roll.
Okay. Crystal, can you call the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, well, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Ellie Fisher, for joining us today. You did an outstanding job and look forward to working with you in the future. Um, it looks like we have a couple of people that want to make comment. We have Councilmember Rack and then possibly City Manager Malpe.
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Palmer Lohan, thank you. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, Mayor Fisher for her excellent work in managing the beginning of the meeting. I thought she did a fantastic job and really appreciate the way she handled that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Madam Fisher, on behalf of the city staff, we'd just like to thank you for your participation and your leadership tonight in helping us with our City Council meeting. You did an excellent job.
No problem. Thanks for joining.
All right, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, bye.
Bye.
Bye, Ellie. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, so now we'll move on to study session item eight A, receiving a presentation on the Housing Element Update. And this presentation will be given to us by Lisa Porras, Advanced Planning Manager. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, uh, council members. Uh, this item is a presentation on the Housing Element Update Project. It was requested by the City Council during its September eighth study session on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. And I think, oops, did I do that? Let me go back. What did I do? I'm sorry. Let's see. I know I have control of these, but it doesn't appear so.
Uh, I, uh, Crystal, Crystal.
Please, please, Lisa, let me, I'll, I'll grab, okay, if you can, uh, don't move your mouse anymore because I can't grab it when you do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Crystal, and let me try that again. Um, let's see. Uh, Crystal, maybe I should have you do it. I don't know if it's an issue with the mouse. I apologize for that.
No worries.
Okay, great. Thank you for getting me back on track. Okay, so continuing on with that, the Housing Element Update Project. The Council requested this study session during its last meeting, uh, its last study session, I will say, but on a different project, the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. So here we are this evening, and one of the things I wanted to start out right away is that the Housing Element Update, the one that we're currently working on, will cover the period between 2023 and 2031. And the purpose of the Housing Element Update, as required by state law, is to ensure that the city has development regulations and policies in place to ensure that its fair share of the Bay Area regional housing need can be met. In our case, that housing need is at least 2,735 new housing units across different affordability levels. Next slide. Now, this project is essentially a two-year project, and we're halfway through. We signed a contract with MIG Consulting Firm, um, the year 2020, and then we had our first community workshop in November that same year. And since that time, we've continued to have a dialogue with the community, which I will go into a little bit of detail in just a moment. But really, the main bulk of the work is working with the community to have a conversation and get their feedback and ideas and potential solutions for how we can meet our housing needs and moving forward with identifying, you know, existing conditions, potential constraints. And we're now in the process of really kind of honing in on potential sites and solutions to meet the arena. So that's where we are right now, in spring of summer 2021. Where we're headed at next is to, following some study sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council, is to start writing the draft elements and zoning amendments, um, to this project. And we anticipate we will have, um, documents released, um, in the first quarter of next year, most likely in March of 2022. And then we'll start the process with working with the state, California Department of Housing and Community Development. Our environmental analysis will be going on at that same time. And then looking at heading into hearings with the Planning Commission first, and then ultimately City Council, following that, um, about a year from now. Um, and along the way, there's still opportunities for the public to be engaged, including during public comment at tonight's meeting, uh, when the draft elements come out through the secret process, and then future upcoming, uh, formal hearings with the Commission and City Council. Next slide. So, um, as I mentioned, uh, this housing element is part of a larger project. In the larger project, we were referring to that as the Hope-
Uh, City Clerk, okay. Your, your audio cut out for just a few minutes, Lisa.
Oh, sure. So let me just start again real quick. Um, can you still hear me?
I can now, yes.
Okay. Um, the project is a focused general plan update, and the reason why it's focused is that we're only looking at two elements right now of the entire general plan. The general plan consists of seven state mandated, uh, elements or topics or chapters that we need to address. And we're looking at housing specifically because it's required, um, to be updated every eight years. So we're in the process of updating it from its 2015 to 2023 cycle to 2023, 2031. In addition to that, several new laws have been passed, um, to address the safety element. And then, um, the third item that we're likely going to need to, uh, update and modify is the land suction. Because of housing element changes, we anticipate there's a high probability that we're going to need to address our land use, uh, general plan land use designations, and perhaps some policy language and, um, text descriptions to go along with that. The project also includes a zoning ordinance amendment, because as we plan for housing, we don't want to just, um, set policies in place, but we want our zoning ordinance to work for us in a way that's going to allow that housing to occur. So part of this overall project, this two-year project, does include amendments to the zoning ordinance. And that's what we're also going to be diving into, um, a little bit later during the presentation, talking about that and continuing on with the work that we're currently involved in. And then finally, um, as with the project of this scope and scale, we are going to be doing an environmental impact report, or EIR, uh, pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. So, next slide. So, the purpose of this project, as I mentioned before, is to comply with state law, but it's also one of the City Council's seven strategic objectives, which is that the city of San Carlos will actively encourage and support the creation of housing to provide a safe, inclusive, diverse, and affordable supply by facilitating development of housing for all income levels. And this is actually perfectly written, and it really mimics what the state's objective is for housing as well, that we are required to provide our fair share of housing for the region's need and affordability levels. Now, this is, uh, to comply with state housing element law. And, um, the, our, our housing element that we're currently in right now, which I mentioned before, 2015 to 2023, required that we plan for 596 units, and we were able to do that without changing any zoning. Um, our zoning was set in place that anticipated, uh, this level of growth, so we were able to do that without modifying zoning during, when the planning, when the last housing element was adopted in 2015. For this housing element cycle, requires that we plan for at least 2,735 new housing units. And then future cycles coming up would be for the period of 2031 to 2039, and then from 2039 to 2047. And as I mentioned before, um, housing elements are required to be updated, um, every- And as I mentioned before, housing elements are required to be updated every eight years. And so I wanted to point that out because other long-term, long-range planning documents, for example, one is the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan that the council will be looking at later this evening, has a longer-term horizon to the year 2025, whereas this housing element cycle is just for eight years, but that's by design, by state law. And then the safety element is also required to be updated to address new aspects relating to climate change, resiliency, and adaptation, as well as wildfire. The safety element also covers other hazards such as geologic hazards and flooding, some of which won't need to be updated, and we probably will be looking at flooding for the safety element as well as relates to climate change. So that's just an overall project purpose that I wanted to share with the council as we move forward. Next slide. So where are we now and what have we accomplished since this project started? Well, the very thing that we began to do as we started working with MIG is not only transfer a lot of data to them and start talking about our existing conditions, but we wanted to start picking off a process where we notified the community. And we issued a spotlight newsletter as well as a project website in November of 2020, just before our first community workshop. We completed an existing conditions report as well as a housing needs assessment. And these are two critical parts of the overall Housing Element Update Report that will eventually be, or element itself, I should say, that eventually will be assembled together with policies and strategies for accommodating the housing. So those two parts have been completed and may undergo some refinement as we get new information. If we can update them, we certainly will. And then with respect to community outreach and civic engagement, so far, we've had four community workshops. The first one in November, we wanted to share with the community what the key issues were, like what is the purpose of this project and what is, what is the overall intent, what are we trying to accomplish? And really shared with them information about some of the state's requirements. And we began to hear their concerns as well as some ideas, and it was very interesting and encouraging that right off the bat, the attendees really started sharing with staff and our consultant team some ideas for how housing might be addressed. And then in January, we started looking at housing type, different housing typologies, ranging from single-family duplexes, duplexes, all the way to multifamily and mixed-use developments, and started having a conversation about site criteria and ideas for where is the best places to locate the new housing. And then in May, August, we really focused on case studies, which I am going to share with the council a little later in the presentation. But we wanted to get the community sentiment for how they feel about increasing height and density in certain areas of the city as a means to achieve the overall regional housing allocation. We combined these workshops with community surveys, and we had a good amount of participate, people participating in those surveys that were held late last year and then earlier this year. And where we're at now is we are working actively with all of the input we receive from the community, especially the case studies we received, and looking at, you know, how we might solve the RENA and meet our housing needs. And like I mentioned before, we want to have study sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council by the end of this year, where we can talk a little bit more in depth in exactly how we propose to solve the solutions so that we can get the Planning Commission's feedback, to share with the council, and ultimately the council direction on how we should go and write the plan. We don't want to write the plan and then bring it to council. We really want to get, because RENA is a key part of the housing element, we feel it's really important to kind of get buy-in on the proposed solution before we start writing policies and looking at zoning amendments beforehand. We are going to be having an EIR scoping meeting, maybe by the end of this year or beginning early next year. And again, the scoping meeting is an opportunity for the public to come and tell us what they want to make sure gets addressed in the environmental impact report. So this is another public input opportunity for the community to get involved in. And then once we have the draft land use, housing, and safety elements drafted and ready to share, we will have another community workshop with the community to show the community how those elements have taken shape and including the policies and strategies that we will use, not only in addition, not only just zoning, but how we might, you know, approach encouraging and incentivizing housing to get built in our community. The next slide. So this next portion of the presentation will cover the regional housing needs determination and the regional housing needs allocation. Before I begin, I do want to share that overall process to determine a regional housing needs determination and RENA is really quite complex and comprehensive. In fact, there is a state housing element law that requires councils of government, in our case, ABAG or the Association of Bay Area Governments, to develop a methodology and to distribute housing units to its cities and counties. And that methodology itself needs to be approved by the state and then adopted by the council of governments or the ABAG Executive Board. So how this process began is that the state used the State Department of Finance's population projections to develop an overall regional housing needs determination for the nine-county ABAG region. That regional housing needs determination was 441,176 units. From that, and we're through the adopted and state-approved methodology, 2,735 housing units were allocated to the City of San Carlos. So the method, the RENA methodology is finalized. The number that you see before you on the screen, the 2,735 number, is a draft number. However, based upon the process that it's been through so far, we have, we don't expect any changes to that number once the official number becomes adopted by the end of this year. Next slide. So just a little bit about the regional housing needs allocation methodology. And I want to point out one correction. And the government code section that's listed in the staff report as well as on the screen here is, in fact, 65584D. So again, 65584D, and I apologize for that typo. But in case anyone was really wanting to follow that and see the language as it's written in state law, you'll want to go to 65584D. Sorry about that, but thank you for allowing me to correct that. So the methodology to allocate this regional housing needs determination, those 441,000 units across Bay Area jurisdictions, needed to meet five objectives that are required by state law. One is to increase housing supply and the mix of housing types, tenure, and affordability in cities and counties in an equitable manner, to promote infill development and socioeconomic equity, protect environmental and agricultural resources, encourage efficient development patterns, and achieve greenhouse gas emission targets. The third objective is to promote an improved intra-regional jobs-housing relationship, including a balance between low-wage jobs and affordable housing. The fourth is to balance disproportionate household income distributions. For example, this would mean more high-income allocation to a lower-income area and perhaps more low-income area to areas that have, that are generally higher income. And then the last is to affirmatively further fair housing, and basically that means that they want cities and counties to take meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination, to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities. So that's a little bit about affirmatively further fair housing. So this whole methodology needed to be developed with these objectives in mind. So which in turn creates, next slide, please, a regional housing needs allocation that has been given to not just our cities, but all cities in San Mateo County that take all of these into account. So here's a breakdown of our regional housing needs allocation by affordability levels. And you can see that the majority of the numbers, once you start looking at this, are actually in our affordable, in affordable levels. So very low, low, and moderate all add up to 1,602 units. So as compared to above moderate, which is market rate, we can see that we have a higher amount of our RENA in the affordability levels. And again, just a reminder that it's not the city's job to build the units, although I know in the past we have worked with affordable housing providers, and we can do that on certain pieces of properties. But for the most part, we're really looking at establishing policies and putting the right zoning in place so that the market can deliver these units as they're needed in our community. So overall, for San Mateo County, the total regional housing needs allocation was just over 47,000. So of that amount, 2,700 was assigned to the City of San Carlos. And again, this is for the eight-year period. And I will say that one of the things that we decided to do, and I'll explain in the next slide, is to take 30% of the affordable housing portion of the RENA and add that to the overall number of 2,735, which means that we would want to plan for 3,216 new units. Next slide. Next slide, please. And the reason why we are planning for an additional 481 units, there are essentially three reasons. The first reason is that it's good to have a buffer because not every site selected by the city or county will be proposed for affordable housing. And best practices are showing that cities and counties are adding a percentage to their affordable, affordable housing portion of the RENA. And just as an example, they are larger cities, but the cities of San Mateo and Redwood City are understanding is they're looking at 50% rather than 30% to their affordable housing portion of their RENA. And it's really best practice is we could go down to 20%, but that would be at most a minimum. But what we're finding in consultation with our colleagues at 21 Elements, working with Bird and Driscoll, is that they're recommending at least 30% of the affordable housing portion. So cities right now are starting to look at this and add this to the RENA for these very reasons. The second reason is that it's because of a new no-net-loss provision in state housing law. And essentially what this means is that if a site is identified for affordable housing, but somehow instead is developed for market rate, and that happens sometimes, we have sites and say, here's a good amount of density. You know, here's our low-market rate inclusionary housing ordinance, or we think this site is a great site for affordable housing, but something happens in the marketplace where that particular site is developed for affordable housing and goes to market rate, then we need to find another site to make up for that affordable housing site that we just selected. So that's the no-net-loss provision. And then the third reason is that the state, not only do they, are they required to certify our housing element, but they're also very much involved in the sites that we select. When we show them our vacant and underutilized sites map and list parcel by parcel all the attributes in each parcel and try and make the case that these are the parcels that we think are likely to be developed and why, the state has the authority to approve them. They basically decide whether they meet the state's criteria for site suitability and feasibility or not. So it's always good to kind of go in and plan for a buffer because we know that not every parcel that we select, select, excuse me, is going to be approved by the state. Next slide. So as we began thinking about solutions for meeting this 2,735 unit or 3,216 unit, unit plan for, some of the things that we look at include approved housing projects. Right now, we do have projects that are under construction. And if they receive their certificate of occupancy or final inspection after June 30th next year, they can count towards that 2,700 number. So a lot of things are in play here. It just means that as we really look to figure out how many parcels we have, what can we count that's in the pipeline today? And the way state housing element law works is that we do get to count projects that are currently under construction, but only if they get their finals after June 30th next year. We're also looking at projects in the pipeline. And then the third thing that we look at are potential sites. As I've been mentioning before, we look at our vacant sites. There's not very many, but we do have some. The majority of what we do have are underutilized sites that could redevelop. We also could look at the amount of accessory dwelling units that we could expect to be built over the horizon of this eight-year plan. Then the other thing we can look at is what can we do to our existing zoning, land use regulations to help bolster and strengthen standards that we already have in place that do allow duplexes, bungalow court-type developments, townhomes, and small lot, single-unit development? And I listed these specifically because I wanted to share with the council that San Carlos does allow duplexes, townhomes, and small lot, single-unit developments, and bungalow courts, only by way of a conditional use permit. So one, so that could be considered a constraint or an impediment, so that could be something that we remove during this housing element cycle and instead make it by right instead of a conditional use permit. So that's an example of the other thing that we can do. And then finally, the last thing that we can look at is, well, what can we do to increase density and building height on sites throughout the city? And if we did so, how much more housing might that yield towards making our RENA? Next slide. So our approach for this and where we began is started to look at, well, you know, where does it make sense to start with? You know, if we look at the overall city land use map, the zone map, where in the city should these housing units be placed? And what we started with was looking at our areas in the city that already allowed residential land uses and the zoning already supported these type of residential uses. And the reason for this is best practice to think of this as that these areas are best positioned for redevelopment. Why? Because these areas are walkable, they're close to schools and shops and areas, you know, parks where people spend their leisure, leisure time and require minimal driving. The second reason is that these areas had existing facilities and resources. They're already in really good proximity to everyday needs, such as, you know, getting access, having access to police and fire services, to the library, our youth center, parks and schools, as well as shops and restaurants and personal services. And the last two things, and I think are really important to point out, is that the majority of the city's overall land year, land area, just all of the land area, the majority of it, is mostly devoted to residential uses. So over 70% of the city's land area is already devoted to residential uses, whereas only 16% is currently devoted commercial and industrial. So we thought before that we go into looking at our, kind of like our very sparse commercial-industrial land use base, what would it mean if we could take a really good look at where residential is already allowed and already close to services and everyday needs like school? And what would it mean if we modified some of the zoning there? The other reason is that the City of San Carlos's general plan, and this is included in the staff report on packet pages 16 and 61, does have general plan goals that support the city's long-term economic and fiscal sustainability. In fact, one of the goals does, in fact, read prohibit conversion of property designated for industrial and commercial on the east side to non-industrial and commercial activities. So we wanted to take a moment and talk about this because I know this came up at the study session on September 8th, and I'm sure we'll talk about it more. The next slide. So as we began to consider, you know, what's really happening with, you know, the marketplace, with our zoning, with our land use policies and zoning development standards now, we looked at, you know, what is, what is currently happening right now with our 2015, 2023 housing element? We know that out of our 596 RENA allocation for that period, we built 575 new units. So we're doing pretty good in the overall number. But where we're falling short is in the affordability level. We've only built 49 affordable new housing units and have 364 more to go. The other thing that we discovered is that the majority of these infill projects that we see, the new projects that The new projects that we see around town, the majority of them are condominiums. And they're, um, occurring, um, in sizes that are quite large, uh, in the mixed use and multifamily zones. We also discovered that most of them are, um, building below maximum allowable densities. I would say more often than not, maybe not most. And for example, we, uh, since twenty fifteen, we had nine projects. That reached the maximum densities, whereas twelve projects did not. So that just adds a little bit of flavor to kind of like what's happening and how are our current regulations being used by the marketplace? We also reached out to developers and had interviews with them and asked them, you know, what are some of the constraints? Towards, uh, reaching, getting more units on the property. What the things that they told us was that height limited them as well as the density or units per acre. Uh, development regulation also limited them. And in addition, especially on some of the small sites, it became really challenging to meet our parking requirements. So this is some of the feedback that we were given. And then the last category really involved working with the community, um, to see how they feel about increasing density and height. In certain areas of the city. And to have that conversation with the community, we looked at two different areas of the city. One was, um, small sites along Laurel Street that are from mixed use development. In the U N zoning district. And then we also looked at sites along El Camino Real. Because El Camino Real is a very, uh, significant, um, in terms of its placement, location, bus lines. And different regional opportunities. And it, it does house, uh, one of our highest densities, fifty minutes to the acre. So we wanted to look at some case studies, um, there as well. Next slide. So what I want to share with the council, because I think this will speak largely, um, to where, um, staff. Is, um, possibly headed, and we're still looking at this. Um, but where we're possibly headed is increasing densities and allowing taller buildings in key areas of the city. And so, uh, we want to share with you some of the key studies that we looked at with the community and kind of unpack that with you as well. And then kind of land on where, what densities we're currently looking at. So, we'll go ahead and get started. So I want to start with the M U N zoning district. And the star on the map here shows, um, the site that we actually looked at. It was kind of in the proximity of a Royal and Laurel Street. Um, next slide. So where we started with, with our existing, um, development, um, standards. So this particular site, um, which is identified here as scenario A, which is just looking at what are existing standards allowed to be built. And the actual address here is nine ten Laurel Street. So when we, um, worked, um, with consultants, and I will, um, say for the record that the work that we're seeing here on the screen. Is a result of work we did with Optico's. And some of the council members may remember Optico's. Who was the consulting firm that helped us with the single family house size issue. So some of the work that we started to get into, but we paused because we knew the housing element was coming up. Was looking at some of our mixed use zoning districts. We knew, uh, right away that, um, our twenty units to the acre was actually. Prohibiting the amount of units that could be built. So on a site, it's just over five thousand square feet. What could, um, excuse me, it's not over, that's the commercial portion, but it's a fifty five, fifty foot wide lot. I think it's maybe a five thousand square foot lot, most probably. Uh, but based on the zoning. Um, uh, the maximum density of twenty units to the acre. It basically said that the maximum units that you can build on a project, on a new project at this site would be just two units. But the allowable number of stories could be four at fifty feet height, fifty foot in height. Although there are transitional standards that require that the steps down relative to its, uh, rear, um. Set back or rear property line because single family is of course adjacent right behind this. So what we're seeing is that the zoning was really, the, the, the maximum units to the acre were, was really limiting the amount of units that could be built. Next slide please. So what we did was one, run through a number of scenarios and I'm skipping ahead to scenario D. Which is the highest, um, units to the acre scenario that we looked at for this site. But this is really just to show that if we increase the density to fifty units to the acre. This would actually yield five minutes. So we more than double the amount of units that could be built. Again, this is a modest site, but every unit counts when we're trying to reach the arena number. And we also found that we could do this in a three-story, um, context, right? So we didn't need to go up to four stories to get to the five units. Um, next slide. And so we, when we summarized all of these, um, scenarios with the community. Looking at, you know, scenario A in the second column, you know, what could be built? And we really kind of dove into the weeds on this and we looked at the amount of open space that was required. You know, probability for how much of it would be commercial ground floor, um, you know, applied the parking standards. You know, this is what we got, you know, two units in scenario A with our existing. If we increase the units to the acre to thirty in scenario B, it yielded one more unit. If we doubled it to forty units to the acre as shown in scenario C, then we could double the units. And then lastly, in the, in the, in the fourth example, um, scenario D. If we increase that to fifty units to the acre, we could get five. But the caveat with five units, um, being the five units are accomplishing fifty units to the acre. We did find this is where we'd have to reduce the parking standards. So highlighted in gold here, um, you'll see that, you know, we, in order to do that, the caveat would be that we, um. We would need to reduce the parking, whereas in all of the other scenarios, we can keep the parking, um. You know, constant and, um, consistent with what we currently have in place. If you can hit the button, Crystal, I think, um, there we go. So what we ultimately, um, heard from the community is that they would be favorable. Of a density increase to forty units to the acre. And this would allow us to keep our, our parking, um, in place. Next slide. So moving on to El Camino Real, um, we did, uh, two case studies here. One, um, was within the eleven hundred block of El Camino Real. Where we did look at, um, some lot consolidation, combining a couple of lots together to see, um, what kind of, um, density. Might be yielded, um, in that particular context. And then the second, uh, site that we looked at was in the northern part of El Camino Real. On a site that was, um, much larger. In fact, it was, um, just two sites. So we wanted to see, well, what could we do with this kind of smaller lot sizes, but then some of them consolidated. Versus, um, a much larger site out of an El Camino Real. So let's go into this. Next slide please. So here, um, we're showing, um, a segment of El Camino Real. And what I wanted to show right at the get-go was, um, what does this look like overall? What, what did we share with the community? And what would it mean if we increased our existing standards from four stories to six stories? Or to eight stories and at different heights. Um, going higher from what we allow in our existing code now at fifty feet, going to seventy five and ninety feet. And these are massing studies and we really, um, took the time to, to explain to the communities. To, to the participants at the workshop, you know, trying not to react so much to the appearance of these. We know in San Carlos that we have a very high standard, but for the purposes of the case studies, we were really trying to convey. You know, the overall massing and height to the community. So they can get a feel for what that might look like along El Camino Real and at three different, uh, scales. So, next slide please. So jumping into, um, the first scenario, so this is the eleven hundred block of El Camino Real. And what we did here is we said, okay, let's take a look at existing standards. But because we hear often that parking is often a constraint, let's look at two scenarios. With our, um, existing standards, but one of the scenarios, uh, looking at what would it mean if we reduced our parking? So the, um, column, um, to the left or the first column. In this scenario, we were able to yield a total of thirty four units under our existing code. And park it with a total of fifty two parking spaces per our current parking requirements. But what happened if we reduced our parking standards? So by, and I can't remember what they are, so if you do have questions on those. I'm going to give Lisa Brownfield, who's our consultant, the heads up. Hopefully she can start looking into that in case you have any questions. But we did reduce our parking standards. And we, and then we saw it, said, okay, what happens if we reduce them? Does this yield more units? And we learned that it didn't. So what that told us right away is that even if we reduce our parking standards. Our, our maximum units to the acre being at fifty and our maximum height being at fifty feet. Were actually the, um, limiting factors for getting more units. So we, so we started to see that right away just by looking at our existing standards. Next slide please. Then we moved into, um, a scenario, what we're referring to as scenario A. And what would it mean if we allowed, um, six stories and increased the height from fifty to seventy five? And what would that look like if we kept our parking, um, regulations constant, consistent with what they are today? Well, we found just by doing that, we can increase the units to eighty four. But if we reduce the parking, what that started to show us was that now we can get more units if we reduce our parking standard. So, um, in these two particular contexts, the one, the one, um, to the left where we keep our parking. Um, consistent with what we have today, um, resulting density out of that massing would be about a hundred and twenty two. Units to the acre. But if we reduced our parking, the resulting density would be a hundred and forty one units to the acre. So next we looked at, well, what does this look like if we were to go even higher? So next slide please. So in this next slide, scenario B, we looked at an eight-story context and a ninety-foot, um, height limitation. And, and keeping our parking consistent, that increase it to a hundred and twelve units. And resulting in about a hundred and sixty three units to the acre. As applying reduced parking standards, it would further increase it to its highest unit count at a hundred and thirty. Which would equate to a resulting density of one hundred and eighty nine units to the acre. When we had this conversation and shared these figures, um, with the community. They preferred, uh, scenario A. So we can go to the next slide. And this just sort of summarizes, you know, what each scenario was yielding. And you'll remember in that first example, uh, which is the, the yellow shaded, um, area on the table. Uh, for unit context, we got thirty four and thirty four units and fifty two spaces. Uh, the units didn't change when we reduced parking. However, uh, in, um, scenario A and B, we did started to see more units, um, could be built. Uh, once we started reducing the parking, um. But ultimately, um, if you can just click on the mouse, Crystal, what the community preferred. Um, was scenario A in this particular context. And, um, we, there are several assumptions, so there's a lot going here on the slide, but I'll just focus on the bottom. Several assumptions that we used, um, in calculating how many units to get, we could get, um, in this particular massing context. It was a mix between studio, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms. So we wanted to share, you know, what does that look like? So studios at ten percent. One bedrooms at fifty five, two bedrooms at twenty five, and then three bedrooms at ten percent. And then we also factored in that in some of these multifamily or mixed use projects, we often see some amenities space. Um, also, uh, provided as well, as well as open space. So we took twenty three percent out of the, of the massing. To accommodate for open space and amenities. So these are all factors in there. So next slide please. So then, so the next case study is L, the El Camino, uh, Real, um, site. Um, and again, what we found here is that even if we reduced our parking, um, our parking, uh, standards. It would still yield, uh, a hundred and ten units for this particular site on eleven El Camino Real. Side please. And then again, as we started to adjust, um, the parking standards, um, the unit count, um, rose significantly. But if we kept our, our parking standards in place, um, indicated on the column to the left. We can get two hundred and fifty eight units on this site, the three hundred and twenty three parking spaces resulting. Um, in a density of about a hundred and seventeen units to the acre versus a hundred and thirty three would be with these parking standards. Next slide. In the final scenario that we want to share, which is again the eight stories and ninety foot, uh, height maximum. Uh, uh, again, through applying, um, our parking standards. Uh, in this particular scenario, we can reach up to over three hundred units with over, just over four hundred parking spaces. Resulting in a hundred and forty eight units to the acre, where again with parking reductions in place. Um, yielding, um, a few more units, a little bit more than just a few more units. Um, that would result in a hundred and seventy seven units to the acre. Next slide please. So once again, when we looked at all of this, um, together, um, and Crystal, you can hit the mouse. The community, um, preferred scenario A, um, which result was resulting in a hundred and seventeen units to the acre. So looking at, um, both the M U N example where the community felt comfortable. With, uh, doubling the density from twenty to forty. Plus this, um, the El Camino Real case studies where a hundred and seventeen, uh, units to the acre. And a hundred and twenty two units to the acre on the lot consolidation site. We rounded that, um, to a hundred and twenty units to the acre. And again, um, the unit mix for this El, eleven El Camino Real, Real site. Is the same as the others with the same assumption for open space and amenities. So again, the community, um, generally felt comfortable with scenario A. Next slide please. During that conversation with the, um, uh, workshop participants. We asked them how they would feel if we extended that to some other mixed use and multifamily areas in San Carlos. And they generally felt okay with it, but, um, I will say that there was a lot of concern about higher, uh, density. Next to single family residential. And the slide here to the right, and the image to the right, um, is a zoning map of the city. And all the areas in light yellow are single family residential. The brown areas are multifamily residential and the different shades of purple and pink. Dark people, dark purple and fuchsia are the mixed use zones. So when we asked them how they would feel without extending that to these areas, they were generally comfortable, but wanted to make sure. That we, um, didn't go too far and, um, not consider, you know, the context, um, between. Multifamily and single family residential. The other thing that we shared with them, well, was that in this particular context, uh, let's leave the downtown core out. Recognizing that, you know, for, for many years, you know, our downtown core is considered the living room. And, um, let's leave that off the table for now. Um, and finally, we did, I did mention transitional standards, but the community wanted to make sure that our existing transitional standards. Would remain in place and perhaps even strengthen to ensure that, you know, their sensitivity to that existing context. Um, we have been having conversations with, uh, the city council housing subcommittee. And, uh, during a conversation that we had with the subcommittee, it came up, um, that maybe, um, we shouldn't leave out the downtown core. That maybe there's possibilities to look at the downtown core and not, uh, necessarily omit it from the possibilities. So I did want to share that with the larger council as well. Next slide please. So the work in progress, um, that we have today and this table, um, is included in your staff report packet. Both, um, as a table and as, um, on some kind of sketched out, um, zoning diagrams, uh, zoning map. Sketched onto the zoning map in terms of what we would be looking at. So what we wanted to really be, um, candid with the council with, um, that we are, um. We are wanting to look at, um, the input that we received at these workshops by increasing the density to a hundred and twenty units to the acre. Uh, in areas all along El Camino Real and in certain areas in proximity to the downtown. Um, and also increase the M U N, um, for the mixed use zoning district along Laurel from twenty four units to the acre. Um, in some of these cases, um, we are looking at, um, the existing context and geography. Whereby not every zoning parcel or parcel that is zone, for example, say R fifty nine. Is going to automatically accrete, increase to one hundred units to the acre. If we just focus at the top two rows of this table here, we do want to be mindful and keep. we do want to be mindful and keep some of the parcels that are RN fifty-nine stay at RN fifty-nine when, for example, they're adjacent to an RN six zoning district. But in other areas where they're not, and there's opportunity to increase it, you can't look at a hundred units to the acre. So if you have any questions again on this, this is in your staff report. I don't think I want to go through every line from here. But I do want to disclose that the, that the debt there would be density increases if in fact this is the solution that we want to go with. And it's something we're currently looking at now with our consulting team. Next slide. So the next steps in meeting the RENA is to really run the density calculations using geographical information systems analysis, which allows us to look at a parcel-by-parcel level on applying these new units to the acre standards. So this is something that we would want to continue to work on and then bring back to the Planning Commission and City Council. Our goal is to do that, to bring it back to the Planning Commission in October and hopefully City Council in November, where we can really focus on, you know, what are we actually doing to meet the RENA? And do we have the Planning Commission's input and guidance? And ultimately, City Council direction on how to meet the RENA. We also, as I mentioned before, are going to need to show our sites to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Again, we do have the authority to approve of those sites. And based upon what our neighbors are doing in Southern California, in the SCAG region or the Southern California Association of Governments, it looks like there's two to three evaluations by HCD before they will really sign off and approve the sites that have been selected. So we're just, so this is kind of, you know, a, a much more rigorous housing element, eight-year update cycle because of the significantly increased RENA numbers, because the state is looking more closely at the sites to be selected. So we don't anticipate getting an answer from HCD until next summer because it could take several rounds of review. But we do want to be in a position where we have the City Council's blessing, if you will, on what we're going forward with and what we're presenting to the state and try to work through the state to get approval from. And then the next steps, in addition to that, are really defining and refining new development standards or what are zoning regulations for mixed-use and multifamily zones. So this is the conclusion of my presentation. But as the council, I'm sure, is aware, there have been several new housing laws that have just recently passed. So we do need to take these into consideration. So we want to kind of, you know, provide some information about those before we close and open it up to questions. So I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Aaronson, Development and Housing Manager. Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Lisa. Crystal, if you go ahead, next slide please. So as you are probably well aware, the governor recently passed a number of bills affecting housing in California. I'm going to give you a quick update regarding three of them here tonight. The first is Senate Bill Eight. And so what this bill did is extended the Housing Crisis Act through 2030. And what the Housing Crisis Act does is it locks in development standards, fees, and zoning at the time a preliminary application is submitted. Then additionally, a jurisdiction has one chance to identify incomplete items in initial application and may not request submission of any new information that was not in the initial list of missing items. It also prohibits jurisdictions from conducting more than five hearings if a proposed housing development complies with objective general plan and zoning standards, and it prohibits zoning and development policy changes that would lessen the intensity of housing, so essentially decreasing density. Now, with regards to the implications for San Carlos, these requirements are already some that the city is currently adhering to. So while this Housing Crisis Act had previously been set to expire in 2025, it's now extended to 2030. But otherwise, we're still operating under the same norms we have been for the last few years. Next slide please. The Senate Bill Nine is probably the most impactful for San Carlos that the governor signed. And this is the one that allows single-family lots to be split into two lots and then add duplexes on each of those lots. So you're essentially taking what was currently a zone to allow one unit for a single-family home can now allow to four housing units. There are some areas that are exempt from this. For example, historic properties or those existing affordable housing are those in high risk of flood or fire. Any new lot has to be at least twelve hundred square feet. It cannot be used for short-term rentals. And property owners must maintain one of the units as their primary residence for at least three years after splitting the property. They also must abide by objective zoning and design review standards. And then parking is not required if the property is within a half mile of a major public transit stop. Up to one space per unit can be required if there are no stops nearby. Additionally, the city must allow units built as a result of a lot split to be at least eight hundred square feet in floor area. Now, with regards to implications for San Carlos, there was a study conducted by the Turner Center at UC Berkeley, and they estimated that an additional five hundred housing units could be built in San Carlos. We haven't researched thoroughly into the methodology of that study yet. Essentially, what they're saying is it's not that five hundred units will be built, but it's what they believe could be built as a result of this change. Next slide please. The Senate Bill Ten is the other one. And it allows local governments to rezone neighborhoods that are near mass transit to increase the density of apartment complexes of up to ten units per property. Now, this leaves it up to the city. So if the city chose to adopt this ordinance under SB ten, then projects of ten or fewer units in this area, in these areas, would be able to bypass CEQA. Now, this is entirely up to the council to determine whether or not it wants to introduce an ordinance under SB ten, but there's no requirement to do so. And then that's the last of the bills, but while we're discussing housing, I just wanted to give a quick update regarding our BMR ordinance update that we have been working on at the city. And so one of the primary components of that ordinance is the inclusionary housing portion. And so essentially, the city's inclusionary housing ordinance is what requires developments currently of seven or more units to set aside fifteen percent of the units as below-market rate or affordable units. So there are different income levels that qualify as affordable, and we have different requirements for developments depending on whether they are for rent or for sale. On the for-sale side, we believe we have found a recommendation that will result in both more affordable units while still making developments feasible. However, we've had trouble on the rental side finding scenarios that produce both more affordable units while still making apartment developments financially feasible. And so we shared this with the Housing Subcommittee at our last meeting. And they directed us to look into scenarios that would reduce our inclusionary ordinance on the rental side and see whether or not that makes a difference in making apartment products more feasible. So we completed that work last week. So we should be able to schedule another meeting of the Housing Subcommittee within the next few weeks to share those results. And then depending on the outcome of that meeting, we should be able to schedule study sessions with the Planning Commission and City Council in potentially November and December, which would then mean that we'd have hearings to potentially adopt the ordinance in early next year. And with that, I believe we're ready to move on to questions on the next slide.
Thank you, Adam. And just to wrap up, thank you, Councilmember Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to let the council know who's available tonight to answer questions. Both Alfa Bay and I are available, as well as Adam Aaronson, Lisa Costas Sanders, and Erin Acken, as well as Lisa Brownfield, our consultant from Mid. And just a reminder to the public who may be watching, more information about the housing element update or to sign up and follow along and get emails, you can go to sancarlos2040.org.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Adam. So we'll start with, if we could just do a couple of questions each from each council member, so that way everybody gets an opportunity. We'll start with Councilmember Collins and then go to Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Lisa and Adam. That was a very thorough, if not lengthy, presentation, but it's all good information, things that we really needed to know. My question is regarding the units along El Camino. A while back, it was pointed out that a lot of those lots, particularly south of San Carlos Avenue going down to Grand City, are rather shallow lots. They're, and, and they make it problematical for for aggregating properties and, and potentially developing them. And I'm just, what I want to know is, how do we, how can we encourage development? Or what are your thoughts about encouraging developments and maybe aggregation of these properties so that we could build some of those projects that you were showing to us?
Lisa, I think I can try that one. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. You know, the, one of the key things is the density and the height that we looked at. Those are the two key limiting factors in this whole thing. So even on a small site where it was impossible or very challenging to develop, just increasing the density and height on, on these small units or, or small properties makes it infinitely more feasible to do. But you're right. Developers, you know, the developers who are going to do ten or thirty or a hundred units, they're going to need more land area to do that. And so that requires assemblage. And there's a number of different tools that cities can use to help that process along. And, you know, we'll be exploring a number of those tools when we come back to the City Council later, but things like sliding density scales and things like that are, are some tools that incentivize developers to get something more the more land area that they get to develop. And so that's just one example of some of the tools that are available to encourage assemblage. Assemblage isn't easy. And, but the economics make it more palatable and interesting for the development community. So anything that you can do to remove constraints that makes them more apt to assemble parcels.
Thank you. I, one, just one more question. And that is, I noticed that there are some scenarios that you pointed out, Lisa, that showed that you don't really, by eliminating parking, parking, you don't increase the units depending on which, which scenario you look at. What I'm curious about is, what goes into those spaces that are created by eliminating the parking spaces? If, if you still get the same number of units, you've eliminated parking, but what's going there?
Lisa, maybe I'll take a crack at this one too, but it's a cost. So what you're doing i- is you're making it much more feasible from an economic standpoint to make it pencil. Because each one of those parking spaces, for instance, if it's just even a surface parking space on the ground floor, it probably costs nearly fifty thousand dollars just for one parking space. If you put it in underground or you have mechanical parking, then, you know, it can, the, the cost of each space goes up from there. So especially on these small lots, what, what we've heard is that, you know, those costs really do count. So a couple of parking spaces is a hundred thousand minimum that you put back onto the pro forma for the developer.
Thank you. That, that makes absolute sense. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Dugan, a couple of questions, and then Councilmember Rack, same.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick one. Well, you know, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-five units for RENA allocation, that, that, that's a lot of units. I do recognize that. But I do just point out that, you know, the goal there seems to be, it looked like, to achieve a, a, a one-point-five out of one jobs-housing balance ratio. And I just note, you know, the, the jobs that we see lining up in our town, I've heard everywhere from, you know, seven to ten thousand. Just going with the eight thousand, even if, and, and I do believe all those jobs will likely be developed and hit during this next RENA cycle. So if you just take that, you know, twenty-seven thirty-five over eight thousand, you get, you get three to one. So, you know, we, we're going to be moving in the wrong direction on, on housing ratio, even if we meet this entire arena. So I guess my question is, has staff given any consideration that maybe we should set an even higher goal? I mean, I realize the buffer, but even that won't get us there. I mean, should we, as a city, actually think more about housing than what RENA is telling us, given we have more jobs coming our way than, than the average city as well?
Lisa, I think I'll start and then I'll have you talk about how jobs-housing is looked at from a regional standpoint. But we, we want to run the numbers on the jobs-housing. So, you know, we've been doing lots of back-of-the-napkin calculations. I know a lot of folks I've talked to in the community, we've had numerous discussions about jobs-housing, what's appropriate for this city, for other cities in San Mateo County, and also the Knight County area region. So what, what we're doing is, we're working with an economist to develop some metrics and, and data that's real accurate, as accurate as we can get in terms of jobs-housing balance. What, what does it really mean to a city, to an area? And what are the implications of it, and what numbers should we be looking at? So I think for, for staff to kind of get into the details on what's appropriate and what, what the real numbers are at this time, we'd like to come back to you with some more, some more clear data. And we will do that as we move forward in the process, but we're developing that information right now. And Lisa, maybe you can talk about how the RENA process approached jobs-housing.
Sure, Al, and I will do my best. As I mentioned before, it's a really complicated process. But I, what I, what I can share with the council and what I have learned is that the, the methodology to allocate the housing units to the different cities and counties took into place what ABAG is calling that an intra-regional, so intra-regional, I should say, versus city-by-city job-housing balance. And in the analysis, analysis that they did when looking at both the West and South Bay subregions, so West would be, you know, where we're located in, in concert with the South Bay, is that in 2015, they started with a one-point-eight jobs-housing ratio. And based upon the methodology and the allocations that they distribute, distribute, distributed it, they would find by, that by the year 2050, the jobs-housing ratio would be one-point-five. So overall, they are indicating that the jobs and housing would be more balanced on a regional level. So this is information that is, that is outlined in their document called the Final Blueprint, which helped to develop the RENA methodology.
Okay. No, thank you. You know, I, I do understand it's a regional issue. It just, yeah, we got a lot coming our way. My second question is about affordable housing. And I just note, over the last cycle, we built forty-nine affordable over five hundred and seventy-five units. That, that's just nine percent. I, I, I wonder why that isn't at least our fifteen percent BMR ordinance, but I really want to look forward here and come to understand if, our traditional planning development process in San Carlos is yielding nine percent on an average BMR. I, I mean, this new RENA allocation, given its affordability requirements, even with that thirty percent buffer in the denominator, that means half of the units, fifty percent, have to be BMR. And that just tells me, we got to start doing something, you know, very different as a city if, if this is more than just a paper exercise. And I'm just curious, so we're, we're kind of planning where that density can go? But, I mean, you know, I, I, we've had some discussions as a housing committee on BMR updates, but to go from nine percent to fifty percent tells me we'd have to do something very radical. So am I missing something? Is fifty percent, like, how do we even make sense of that? I don't think any, you know, I don't think fifty percent happens in a, you know, normal economic cycle. I mean, unless there's some massive government subsidy coming, I don't know how any development gets achieved on average at fifty percent affordable. Can, can, can I just, can someone help me understand that better?
I'll start, and then Adam, feel free to jump in. But you hit something that is an issue in the state of California. And it's a very serious problem. And, you know, these are the numbers in what Lisa said earlier in the presentation. The city of San Carlos isn't going to be required to build these units. We just have to plan for them and make sure that there's less constraints for their development and where they can go in our community. But we're not charged with building those units. The city of San Carlos can make it easier for developers to build affordable units. But frankly, what we've seen for many, many years, and the reason that, you know, we have a crisis, one of the reasons we have a crisis is not just the surplus, the numbers, the demand, but it's the cost of creating an affordable unit. Who is going to, what developer, what market rate developer is, you know, really interested in building those units? It's expensive. The Vice Mayor mentioned earlier, you know, the astronomical cost of this 100-plus unit development project. So it's a matter of economics that hasn't been solved by the marketplace. And I would agree with you, Councilmember, that this will require a group effort, a massive group effort between the public and the private sector to make it work.
I can address the 9% issue there of the discrepancy between 15%. And essentially, a large reason for that is our inclusion ordinance has changed since that time. Previously, we legally weren't allowed to require that BMR units be built in apartment buildings. But that changed within the last few years. So now that is not the same. Now we do require that 15%. And that will likely be changing in the future. And moving forward, we should see at least that percentage, if not more.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you. This is a big issue on affordability.
Thank you. Councilmember Raxing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so Lisa and Adam and Al for all the question answering in their presentations. I had, since we're, I have lots of questions, but I'll limit to two in this one. One, I know you did the, at the, through the focus groups and the community meetings, you talked about, you kind of found that sweet spot of, let's say, 75 feet for the height for some of the projects on El Camino that you talked about. But I guess I'm a little, I'm wondering, when you asked the question, did you talk about the potential for the density bonus? Because now you may, in those cases, you may get the density bonus. And now you're going to the 90 feet, which people, as I read from the staff report, weren't so thrilled with. So, I mean, I'm just wondering if that question sort of doesn't accurately portray what could happen? And so are we sort of misleading the public around 75 feet isn't really 75 feet potentially?
Lisa, you want to try that one?
Yes, and I will ask, maybe Lisa Brownfield can also talk about this as well. But this is actually, you know, this is something that we definitely need to address. Because first of all and foremost, we're not trying, you know, to pull a fast one on the community. You know, we really wanted to know where their comfort level was with the overall mass and where they would feel comfortable enough to accept. The other thing is that when applying for the state density bonus, you know, not always might a developer need a concession from height to be another one of the zoning standards. You know, maybe it's a setback or open space, or it could be some other development standard that could. So basically, the concession comes into play when a developer can't fit the additional housing units within the context of the zoning standards. So that's something that we would want to carefully look at even further, because this is just the very first step of the analysis. There's much more work we would need to do and want to do to ensure that what we communicated to the public does work even in conjunction with a state density bonus. Lisa Brownfield, did you want to add anything to that?
Good evening, councilmembers. One of the things that we talked about a little bit, or actually, we heard from the community, is they, overall, they did, they were comfortable with the 75-feet height limit. However, there was also a portion of the community who were okay with taller. And so we, as a whole, were kind of going a little bit more on the conservative side of that equation. And as Lisa said, not everybody's going to want to come in and want to have additional heights beyond that. Because you eventually get to different types of construction methods and some other things that are going to come into play. When we talked to the development community, they were very clear that, to them, the sweet spot is anywhere from the 65 to 75 to 80-foot range. So we also had this, not only was the community telling us this information, but we also heard from the development community. And when we talked to the development community, we were talking to both for-profit and nonprofit developers. So we were looking at both sides of that. And that's what they were coming back and saying was their kind of sweet spot for looking at what would encourage them to build more housing. In addition to the density increase would be allowing heights to go that tall. So it was, we kind of took all of that information in together. And then that's why we're coming out with some of the proposal about doing 75 feet.
Okay. That's helpful, Lisa, both Leises, thank you, in this case. It's helpful to understand. And I just think it's something we need to be mindful of as we think through the height. And because there are some things and setbacks and other things that will come into place with the density bonus, if that does get used. And while I feel we got great participation from the community, that participation is only, I think, people who wanted to talk about housing, and it's a smaller number. And once people see this is coming, the larger community may have, you know, different opinions. And so I just sort of being mindful of that, I think, is useful. Thank you. My second question is, when I looked, and I don't know that Lisa, that you, Lisa Porst, that you touched on this, but I may have missed it. When we, you talked about certainly the stepping down of the density along from sort of like Laurel Street, from El Camino down to Laurel on the west side. But it looks like we're not recommending any changes on the east side of Laurel to increase density. Is that something that came up at all to kind of maybe change that stepping? Because perhaps the community is more comfortable with a little bit more density on the east side of Laurel versus, I get it, you know, don't want to go too much on the west side because you're going right into single-family housing?
Right. So let me just make sure I understand your question. So, yeah, so on the west side of Laurel Street, you know, currently, we actually have two different zoning districts in the west side of Laurel Street. So on the west side, which is adjacent to single-family, which is largely the MUN zoning district, is currently 20 units to the acre. So that's the area where we would double it to 40. And then the area to the right of that, we would be looking at kind of like a graduated height as it moves out towards El Camino Real. So on the, on the east side of El Camino, we would look at 50 units to the acre. And then once that particular zoning district runs onto El Camino Real, that would jump up to potential of 120 units to the acre. But we really wanted to allow, you know, a higher density threshold on El Camino Real mostly, and then sort of step it down as it reaches, as each zoning district kind of advances, you know, closer to the single-family residential.
Got it. And but if I understand it correctly, unless I misread in the packet, we're not talking about changing the density on the east side of Laurel, correct? That was already at 50, or is that something that we are?
Oh, correct. That's already at 50.
So I guess my question was, did we, we were looking at some of these other changes around everything else around it? Did we look at increasing the density there to, let's say, 60 or something? Or was that sort of nothing, something that wasn't considered? As we, to kind of change the stepping?
Yeah. I mean, we have, we have the ability to change the stepping. I mean, we can look at, you know, and see. I mean, right now, we're kind of working with the two case studies and sort of, again, it's a work in progress. So rather than kind of, you know, jumping right away to increasing the density to something else, we felt let's leave it here for now. And the process is going to be iterative, because we can run, you know, certain numbers, these proposed density increases, to kind of see where we land with meeting the arena. And if we don't need to increase the density in some locations, you know, there's an opportunity to maybe leave that off the table. We have a future housing element cycle coming up.
Sure.
You know, so it, but definitely, it's something that we can look at.
Okay. No, that's great. That's helpful, the way you explained it. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank staff for the great presentation. And I can tell that a significant amount of community outreach and feedback has already gone into this process. And I really appreciate us having this, you know, first look at the housing element tonight. I have two questions, and then maybe at some point Jeff could also chime in with his big picture take on this. But my first question is, I guess I wanted to dive a little bit deeper on what you've heard from housing developers regarding multifamily housing. And do you think that increasing the density in the different proposals will help these projects pencil out and get built? And what degree of confidence do you have that making these changes will, you know, help bring this change about? I think I'm, you know, I'm looking for zoning that, you know, will work to get this housing built. And it looks like we're headed in the right direction. But I guess I'm wondering, you know, what degree of confidence do you have that, you know, increasing the density and height will be the trick that we need?
I guess I'll start, Lisa. You know, from what we've heard in speaking directly to the developers, we have a high degree of certainty that this is what they're asking for. That from an economic standpoint. And we have some examples in our community where we have 20 units to the acre that have not changed over for, you know, 10 or more years. Because it's just not economically feasible with the construction costs and land costs and other costs for the developers. So we do have a high degree of certainty that they're telling us that this is a barrier for them. And furthermore, we are seeing some projects, we're talking to developers about projects that exceed our current densities, that they have the desire to acquire properties on El Camino, but they're kind of taking a wait-and-see approach with this process to see if the city's going to go in the right direction and kind of tip the scales to make it more feasible. So I think that, I mean, we know, and we've known for quite some time, that density was, it was done as an art, somewhat artificially, you know, to some extent. But the intent was to limit the number of housing units in cities in the state of California. And it's been used as that tool for many years. So from an economic standpoint, we feel confident that this is a very significant step in the right direction. And you're likely to see many more developers come forward if you double your density on El Camino Real, for instance.
I can add, from the BMR ordinance perspective? So just, we've been running this scenarios at different levels of units. And there's undoubtedly more feasibility, the larger you go. The larger the project is, the more feasible it becomes when, you know, economy's a scale and just the number of units you're able to fit on a parcel.
That's great. I'm glad you added that, Adam. I see Jeff brought his camera on. Did you want to chime in, Jeff?
I did, yeah. It seemed like you wanted my perspectives. And my perspectives on that question are probably through a different lens than Al and Lisa's and Adam's from a less technical perspective. You know, I'm really, this, I've subcommittee meetings and meetings with staff and consultants seen pretty much all of this information. But it's the first time I've really seen it coalesce in the staff report and presentation and start to come together is something that the mind might begin to make, you know, to see that plan, not finished, but developing. And so I'm very encouraged by that. But I always start sort of my perspective and going back in time. Just five or six years ago, when we polled the community in one of our community surveys about housing, there really was not a lot of support within the community for increased housing. And it was, it very often came up as sort of an ancillary issue with other projects and things that were going on in the community where there was pushback regarding housing. And the council, I think, very wisely recognized that, you know, they needed to do a lot more education and outreach to the community on the issue. And you all have really continued that and stepped it up the last few years. And it's, you know, amazing to see the level of support have grown so much within our community for creating housing and understanding that, you know, we can't wave a magic wand and create housing. You know, that creating it means actual physical changes to the types of buildings we see in our community in terms of height and density and what that's going to mean. And there seems to be a real, you know, not just support within the community for housing, but a much more sophisticated understanding of, you know, what it's going to take to actually see the housing created. Because coming up with a plan, as difficult as it is to get through a planning process, is nothing compared to the difficulties of actually creating the housing. And I think folks, through participating in our process, have really grown to understand that it's not the city that builds this housing. It's private investment that's going to build 2,700 units. You know, the city might be involved in a small fraction of those units. But it's going to be that private investment that really, you know, makes or breaks the success of this initiative in our community and any community in our region in terms of developing that housing. And the approach in the presentation tonight, I think, did a really good job of focusing on, you know, what those obstacles are and what tools the city council has to help remove those obstacles. Because what you're doing is you're encouraging, you want to encourage housing development. And, you know, we, you know, I've seen tonight a number of those tools laid out in the presentation. And I'm very excited to, you know, to imagine a San Carlos that has those tools in its toolkit to be able to see the needed and necessary housing brought to our community to address this issue. And really done so in a way that will make it part of our community. Because, you know, the council has other values that we heard expressed in the presentation tonight about inclusion and diversity and, you know, community and those kinds of things. And, you know, those are all really going to be key elements to, you know, the long-term success of this, because these houses, these houses aren't going to get built in just a few-year period. You know, this is going to be really the beginning of a new era in our community in terms of building housing. And, you know, if we're successful in achieving it along with our other core values, I think there will be a real satisfaction in the community about housing and how it's folded into the community makeup and becomes part of the fabric of the community. And it's not, you know, someplace else that doesn't feel like San Carlos. And I think we're very much on the right track. I definitely look forward to the rest of the process unfolding and coming back and being able to present additional data and have a really robust conversation with the council and your commissions as this process moves to completion next year. Does that sum it up for you?
Thank you. Yeah. No, I appreciate you weighing in, Jeff. Thank you. And I think that that segues into my second question quite nicely, actually, because you've talked about the tools that are at our disposal as a city. So I'm wondering, what tools do we have where we could require developers of large commercial projects to actually build housing instead of, you know, writing a check for our commercial linkage fees? And I think there was a, we alluded to that in the vision plan already, because it's called direct provision. And so since we're talking about housing tonight, I'm wondering if anyone has some initial thoughts on the tools that we could use there?
Jeff, you want to start, or I can take that question?
I think, I think we can both handle it. I'll just start quickly. You know, development agreements allow the council a lot of latitude in terms of negotiating for specific things that you'd like to see that you might not be able to. you know, development agreements allow the council a lot of latitude in terms of negotiating for specific things that you'd like to see that you might not be able to ask for in other contexts. And, you know, the idea of, um, of, um, asking a developer to build housing in your community is not a, you know, I mean, it's not a brand-new idea. It's definitely achievable. Um, I had a lot of conversations today about that and I think there are, are definitely ways to achieve that. It's a partnership, so I can only sort of speak from our side of the equation. We'll have to be talking to the, um, developer partner and not all developers are, um, created equal in their, um, access to resources and capital and those kinds of things. And not all development projects are of the same size and scale. But I think, you know, the, probably the most important thing that you're going to do in making that achievable is, is this housing element. Because by, um, by addressing the issues of height and density, um, you're making it more economically feasible to build housing and you're also, you know, making it more cost-efficient to build housing, um, particularly at the scale you need to meet your RENA numbers. And so making these changes will be critical, I think, to the viability of that, um, concept. And then, um, working specifically with developers to, um, you know, identify sites and possibilities. We, we probably, especially when you're talking about commercial developers, probably know more about the community and sites that have been identified and targeted in the past for housing in our community that we can share with developers and, and, um, and even in cases where we can put them together. And I know some of those conversations are actually already taking place in our community between developers and that the staff has, has been involved in, in trying to help make those linkages. Al, you want to add some to that?
Um, I, I think you, um, you really got it. It's, you know, the, where it needs somewhere to go, the housing needs somewhere to go is the capability of the developer to do it and it's the constraints. So those are, thank you for reiterating that, uh, Jeff. And then, um, finally, um, when you, you know, negotiate these development agreements, as you mentioned, as we were discussing in the other plan, the Eastside Plan, um, it's really a matter of balance and priorities for the council. Um, you, you will have the ability to decide, um, strategically what is important at that time with a particular developer at, at a particular point in time. So if you weight your community benefits more in housing or more in somewhere else, you have the capability to do that, um, with each of these development agreements. So, um, your commercial linkage fee is simply a starting point.
That's great. Thank you. I, I see Greg has his camera on. I, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I think I just would, would want to, from, from the legal side of this, uh, the, the linkage fee just, um, is, is based upon a Nexus study and the impacts from individual projects. Um, and, and that study created that, that connection between the impacts from the projects. So in order to, to create an ordinance or a law that would, um, do something similar to the development agreement process that Al and Jeff are talking about, we would have to have a study that would, that would create the, the, a direct impact from the development to the need for them to build, to actually build the housing, which I, I'm not aware of any cities that have done that, but I'm, I'm glad to, to look at that to see if there's a way to do that. And I guess I could envision a hypothetical, um, you know, that years and years ago, companies would build housing for their employees. Um, it wasn't from a, from a, um, a, a government requirement. It was by necessity to house their employees in, in different environments where they were working. So there, there may be a way to do it, but again, I haven't seen, um, cities that have, that have gone in that direction. Um, but glad to look at that for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Um, well, and thank you, uh, to staff for the very thorough, uh, presentation, very informative. I appreciate that. And I recognize that we're very early in the journey. Um, also appreciate, um, the community, uh, coming forward and participating in the process and, um, my colleagues, uh, inquiry on, on this, uh, very important topic. So, so I just want to circle back on some of the themes that were already raised, um, earlier in the discussion and, and that is around kind of getting to kind of the, the fundamental need, uh, that we have in our, um, in our community in terms of the creation of affordable housing. And, um, uh, what I'd like to better understand is, um, it sounds like, you know, we have participated with developers and, and talked to them to some degree. Um, I recognize that, you know, zoning and, um, other ordinances, um, create a, you know, conditions that can either create a pathway towards development or, um, create a barrier to that. And it often comes down to, you know, small, um, you know, a small line, for example, uh, um, uh, in, in our, our code or ordinance. And so I'm, I'm wondering and hoping, um, that there'll be, um, you know, perhaps, you know, very thorough discussions with developers to understand, you know, what are the precise conditions that need, that would be, need to be in place for them to really feel motivated to, um, work in San Carlos. And I, and I have some concerns around, uh, the size of the parcels, uh, that was brought up earlier. Um, Councilmember Collins talked about, you know, the depth of some of these areas. Um, when we look at the, um, areas where the land is potentially going to be increased in terms of numbers of dwellings, it's kind of a narrow strip. And when I look at other projects across, uh, the peninsula, there's often a much larger footprint that allows for greater amenities. So, um, Lisa or Al or, you know, Jeff, could you talk to, you know, what work is planned to, you know, really have a sit-down with, um, the developer community, uh, to understand what is currently not working in our set of roles, um, and what needs to change in order for them to, um, be inspired to, to, to build what I would call affordable housing in our community, right? And we know we can get market-rate housing, but how do we get that affordable rate housing?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we, we are continuing on to have these discussions through, through this process and, um, we, you know, we have the, um, the fort, good fortune to be able to meet with developers because some of them are doing development in our community. And, um, so we're, we're continuing to have these discussions and, um, we, we've talked to, um, as part of this process, we've talked, talked to both, um, for-profit and nonprofit housing developers about this issue. And we, as noted, we were having that dialogue as we, as we go forward and, and so, uh, we kind of know what some of the big issues are. Um, we found some things that are pretty interesting, I think, even for the development community. Um, I think we, we touched on things like parking earlier. Um, parking may be more of a cost issue than it is, um, anything else. Um, it makes more of an impact to them as a cost issue. But, um, so we do continue to have those discussions and, um, with both groups. And frankly, there's a big um, difference between the way they fund projects. So it's almost like, um, it's almost like a completely different culture. It's culturally different because the financing techniques for affordable housing and for-profit housing are much different. Some of the things, um, that a for-profit housing developer would do and nonprofit housing developer can't do, um, because of constraints around, um, the people who lend them money or give them tax credits and things like that. So that's an area that's new to us, I think, um, that we've learned recently. So I think, um, to reassure you that, um, we're continuing to have these discussions. And in fact, I mean, at, at some point, it might not, um, be a good idea to just have, um, some developers address the council in some way, um, to give it, you know, give them their opinions directly to you.
Great, thank you. Um, and then my next, uh, question is, um, I want to build on something Council, Councilmember Rack, uh, said, as well as City Manager, uh, Jeff Moltby. And that is, you know, I, I, um, again, I'm very grateful for the people who have been participating in this process. Um, I think, you know, similar to the Eastside Development, uh, these, uh, changes that we're going to likely be making will be transformational for San Carlos in many ways. And so, um, to that end, with respect to, um, the fact that many community members, you know, have, uh, articulated their, um, desire to see us act quicker and, and more swiftly with respect to, you know, creating conditions in which affordable housing can be made. Um, I also recognize, you know, to Councilmember Rack's point of view, that there could be community members who are not necessarily participating and, um, um, are, um, you know, you know, when these projects were to start, right, would, you know, express some concerns. And there was a, a really well-done spotlight that was done previous this year. Could you describe a little bit about what communications are planned as you get closer to, um, having more specific details around changes in the zoning, uh, that would help the community understand, you know, what might be coming in San Carlos in the future? And I'm, again, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but whoever feels most comfortable.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Lisa, could you try that question?
Sure. And, um, I think this is great that you brought that up and certainly, um, having this study session, um, tonight is an opportunity to get that, um, communication, a dialogue going with, with the community. Uh, because while this is a city council study session, we did, um, reach out to our, kind of our email distribution list, the folks that have been following and participating um, in the process, um, not just those folks, but also using, um, our social media, uh, toolkit to get the word out and updating our website and those sorts of things. But, um, some of the things that, um, I, I, uh, tools that the city has that works very well, um, is the Spotlight Newsletter. And we can certainly do another Spotlight Newsletter and have a conversation about how we're meeting our housing needs. And, and, you know, after a lot of research, you know, and working with community at these workshops, here's kind of the direction that we're going. Um, and then encourage them to, you know, those who haven't been engaged to kind of get plugged in as we move forward because we've got a whole other year left to go. Um, and now's the time, you know, to really kind of, you know, take part and, 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 um, of the housing moment if they haven't already. So that's something, um, that we actually haven't talked about yet because we're so engrossed in the work. But once we kind of get to a point where we're, where we're ready to kind of, you know, daylight this, I mean, we're daylighting it now, but again, there's more refinement to be done. Um, that we, would be a great idea to do a Spotlight Newsletter as a way of letting the community know what our plans are.
Thank you. All right. I see Councilmember Collins' hand is up and then, um, assuming there's no further questions, we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, just a brief comment. Um, staff has just done a wonderful job. This is very thorough, but, um, really what I wanted to say is that, uh, I want to commend my colleagues for really focusing on this. I've felt like I was sort of banging my head against the wall for eight years on the housing issue. And because we've been spending so much time on it lately, um, I think everybody's realizing what a very complex and interconnected issue this really is and how much work there is to do on it. And that there's many ways to solve, uh, not only affordable housing and housing in general. Um, and it also is helping us alls, also see how we fit in with the bigger picture, uh, since we live in the fifth-largest metropolitan area of the country. So I just want to say I'm, I am pleased and encouraged that we are, I think we're finally making some real progress towards understanding how deep and complex this problem is. So kudos to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments?
Yes. Yes, we do have a few hands up. Uh, there's five hands up at the moment. Um, Moose M., you're first up, followed by David Tuzman.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, uh, uh, this is, uh, Mark Albert under his nom de guerre of Moose M. Um, good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan and the rest of the council. I have a question and a comment. First, the question, what is the source of the two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-five units in San Carlos's RENA number? Specifically, is it based on the anticipated nearly ten-thousand jobs that will be coming to San Carlos once the numerous biotech projects are built out? My understanding is the current RENA number does not reflect most of that increase. If so, relying on those numbers could be dangerous. Second, the comment, Ms. Porras made a very important point, which is worth emphasizing. It is not the job of the city to build the assigned housing units, but it is the city's job to establish the policies so that the market can deliver those units when they are needed. Given the breadth and depth of the housing crisis, it is clear many units are needed and nowhere near enough have been built. Some San Carlos residents, I'm sorry to say, are starting to rise up in anger about Sacramento interfering with local control over housing policy. Worse yet, I fear it will not take much for them to focus their anger on the council for failing in its duty to the community and thereby forcing Sacramento to act instead. I truly hope that doesn't happen. It will take creative, assertive leadership and a willingness to do things differently than has been done in the past. I was very gratified to hear new ideas being considered tonight. I encourage you, I strongly encourage you to pursue all of those and more. This problem is so big and past practice has failed us so badly that nothing less will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Jeff and Al, like, I know you addressed this question earlier because it came up from one of our councilmembers with respect to, uh, the jobs, um, uh, forecast in the, in the near term versus the longer term. Could you please reiterate your answer from previous questioning? Thank you.
Lisa, could you talk about how RENA looked at, uh, jobs housing?
Uh, yes. Um, one of the things that, um, goes into the, um, I think it's called the blueprint. Um, so there's a plan and it, and it's really, um, in response to SB three-seven-five from years ago, the Sustainable Community Strategies. So, um, and the transportation plan. Um, so those need to be, you know, planned together. And so one of the things that goes into the consideration of the, of the forecasting, the future forecasting is evaluation of the city's general plans. So if one were to look at our general plan and look at the, um, anticipated amount of build-out in office, commercial, um, and industrial, um, there's a, there's a certain number in, in the general plan. And I have it somewhere, but not off the top of my head. But just suffice to say that what goes into the planning of that does take into the consideration of the amount of, uh, job growth expected in, in, in different cities across these different jurisdictions. So our general plan, um, goes to the year, uh, twenty-thirty. And we do have a build-out figure for commercial, industrial and, um, um, and, um, commercial, industrial and, um, and office space, um, as well as for housing. So this is some of the work that Al alluded to earlier in the conversation. We're kind of taking a closer look at, um, the development that's coming in now as compared to what we forecasted it might be when the two-thousand-nine general plan, um, was updated. So we have an overall, you know, kind of horizon line for that. And the housing element, as I mentioned before, it's a little bit different. If we took our twenty-seven-thirty-five and multiplied it by three, which covers three housing element cycles, taking us to the year twenty-fourty-seven, we had over eight thousand, we have like over, I think it's maybe eighty-two hundred RENA count for that. And, um, I understand the concern is that, you know, the, the, um, I guess the expectation or the assumption that a lot of this development, you know, proposed now is going to be built, you know, much quicker than, you know, the, um, like three, three housing element cycles from now. So I guess that's a long-winded, uh, way to answer, to address the question. Um, but, um, the final blueprint and the, and the jobs and housing forecast, um, that went into the, went into the methodology did look at city's general plan, uh, build-out, um, horizons. And then, colleagues want to add anything to that?
So, uh, the answer is yes, it did.
Okay. Thank you both. All right, Crystal, who, is there another person in the queue?
Yes, we have five more at the moment. Uh, David Tuzman, you're up next, uh, followed by Tony Barilic.
Hello, uh, my name is David Tuzman. I'm a resident of San Carlos. Uh, thanks so much for the presentation. I'm really glad to see that we're aiming for thirty percent over our RENA allocation for affordable units and acknowledge the reality that the number of units that actually get built is going to be much less than what our zoning technically allows for. So RENA is really a minimum. It's a floor to aim for. It should go higher. Um, also note that Objective Two of RENA includes the goal to protect environmental resources. Uh, an important way to work towards that is to reduce or eliminate parking minimums. Not just to, it, it's great if it can create more units, absolutely, or bring the cost down in units. But, you know, building more car infrastructure is not helping us towards our climate goal and it just incentivizes more driving and more car purchases. Um, I'm really curious when staff is going to present to the community scenarios where we expand the area where we allow multifamily housing. I, I feel like we're I feel like we're working with our hand tied behind our back when the vast majority of our residential land only allows for one single detached unit on each plot. It's really inefficient and hurts the aims of achieving our RENA goals. Also interested for the staff to incorporate the East Side Vision Plan with the housing element, which has been raised often in the East Side Vision Plan workshops, but it's just no housing is being considered there. And the timing of when that vision plan is finalized first, when the calculation will be made to potentially show that just putting it in this concentrated downtown area isn't enough, it's, it's going to be too late. I, I liked Mr. Savay's point that zoning is artificial. I think it's really important to remember that it was created just 70 years ago by people to artificially constrain how much housing we can build. And I know that the city itself doesn't create housing, but it has copious tools to slow down and hinder the creation of housing, zoning or apartment requirements or discretionary review. So it's something important to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Next up is Tony Berelik, followed by Debbie.
Yeah, this is Tony Berelik. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I've been operating and working in San Carlos for the last 25 years. City, San Carlos is known as the city of good living. And I, one thing that I noticed about this whole meeting, that there's almost no opposition to this high-density housing. City of San Carlos is more of a bedroom community. I like San Carlos because it is, it's easy to get around, there's not a lot of traffic. There actually, there is a lot of traffic now and I can see with building all this high-density housing, we're not going to be living in the city of good living, but probably Hong Kong or New York. I, I really don't like it. Again, there's no opposition. It feels to me like it is Sacramento and the governor that's trying to dictate our community and how it's, how it's supposed to be here. There's plenty of room in California, why it has to be here in San Carlos, I don't know. But when it comes time to vote for city council, I'm going to vote for somebody who has a backbone to stand up against some of this high-density housing that I'm really not in favor of. And I know I don't, I'm not alone when I say this. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tony.
Next up is Debbie, followed by David Crabbe.
Thank you, council members. This is Debbie Baldocky. I'm a San Carlos resident. And I have two issues that I'd like to raise tonight. One is transparency. I'd like to thank Councilmember Rack for pointing out that the community in these housing workshops were enthusiastic about 75-foot height limits, but with bonus density, they will be closer to 90. And I think if you do publicize this, please tell the city members in advance, hey, if you agree to 75, it could be 90, just to let everyone know that those are the minimum and the maximum so they aren't disappointed. An example of that was Black Mountain when the amount that was in the first DIR was in the 50s. And then the second with bonus density was near 90. So that creates unrealistic expectations in the community. Just tell them what is coming. And number two, environmental issues. We're really near Smith Slough and Pulgas Creek, as I've mentioned before, empties into Smith Slough. And our climate mitigation and adaptation plan has talked about the importance of the environment setbacks from the creek, for example. And it was disappointing to see that SEQA is viewed as an impediment to housing. And environmental issues, protection of the environment should not be secondary to providing high-density housing. The third point I would make is that in the housing presentations, Al Savay did a very good job on showing different scenarios where high-density housing could be built with spacing that looked very attractive and came in at 75 feet. So thank you for those workshops and allowing us the opportunity to participate. And thank you for all the work you do for us.
Thank you.
Next up is David Crabbe, followed by Dmitry.
Good evening, council members. Dave Crabbe here. Yeah, I have been in contact with you over several different letters, I believe, about the disconnect between the, the commercial development on the east side and the housing element that we're doing now. Kind of reflects some of the comments we've had already in terms of, I don't know that I catch Lisa Porras correctly, did she say that the old general plan anticipated 8,000 jobs in the next 10 years? I hope I got that right. Is he at 8,000 jobs, 8,000 housing units? In either case, that's far more than 2,700 units of housing, based in either jobs or on housing units. And we seem to keep, just continuing to approve these commercial projects without realizing the impact on housing. Why don't we think about slowing down the commercial development? I, you know, San Carlos needs commercial development, but it may not need this much commercial development. There is a balance somewhere. And if you don't want to have five, you know, 10-story buildings or whatever along El Camino Real, the reason we're looking at that is because we're developing all these new jobs in this area. And it's not just San Carlos. Every city along the peninsula is pretty much doing it. And neither one is helping the other ones out. We can look to Belmont, or maybe Belmont's not a good example, but San Carlos, Redwood City, and say, well, they'll give us the housing that we need. They're already buried. They can't make their own housing elements at this point. And so figuring this is going to be a regional question is not really a good answer. Plus, we do need more affordable housing because I believe like my 90% of the people who work in San Carlos actually commute in from outside. And it'd be nice to have some balance in terms of people working here and actually living here. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. We have two hands left. Dmitry, followed by Tim Hilborn.
Yes, hi. Can folks hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, I want to thank staff for the presentation and for the perspectives that folks have brought to this meeting in public comment. I, I agree with a number of the perspectives that residents have brought up. A couple of things that I want to sort of focus on, in, in the meetings with the community where we were, you know, just sort of discussing like the trade-offs with density in height, there were maybe 50 to 70 or so folks representing. So I think we, we have to be careful about, you know, if that truly reflects the, you know, consensus amongst the community overall. So I do appreciate Councilmember Rack's comments on that. I think that that's a, a good insight. And I also think that, you know, there is an opportunity here. This is really hard. We're trying to, you know, thread the, the needle and come up with a good balance. One thing that I thought was quite interesting was if we think about total number of units and reduce the actual size of them and build more studio one-bedrooms, we could kind of achieve multiple goals, which are build units without having to go too high and really change the character of the community. So I think, you know, really thinking that through is, is really important. And lastly, for the giant Alexandria, you know, complex, I, I truly do feel we, as a community, we should figure out what levers we can use to have them help out with some potential housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dmitry.
Thank you. Next up is Tim Hilborn, followed by Sonia Elks.
Okay. City council and staff, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it. First of all, a couple of things on, on the presentation about SB 9 and SB 10. About 70% of the Californians who were polled are against both of those bills. A couple of things about SB 9, it's not four units, it's actually eight units that can be developed on a split lot. To split the lot, however, the, the owner has to pay off their mortgage. So we're going to see developers coming in and splitting those lots and putting developments. They're not, not the owners because most people do not have their mortgage paid off and they won't. SB 10 allows 10-unit apartment complexes in single-family neighborhoods and that, and if the city council approves that, and it takes away the initiative process and there's no recourse for the community to do anything about it. So I'm completely against Sacramento doing this. We need local control. We have a jobs, housing imbalance. We don't have a, a housing crisis. And I asked the city council decades ago, post redevelopment, to work with other cities to get better tax pass-through for residential versus commercial. Right now, 17% of our commercial is paying 80% of the city revenue or close to that. We need not just a fee structure, but we also need more taxes coming from, coming from the commercial and industrial. For the Alexandria project, why can't we have their eight-story parking lot be an eight-story housing complex? I, I just don't see the balance that we have. We need to fix the balance. We need to stop the commercial development. We need to get housing in here, not along El Camino, not 90-foot. You know, that's, that's way too much density. You know, we're going to be facing ongoing construction. And the last thing I'm going to say is, once you start going up, how is the city council and the city staff going to watch out that they're not doing short-term rentals like they did at the transit village? So we just really need to stop the commercial development and get money and, and make these commercial developers help out with the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Next up is Sonia Elks, followed by Elmer Martinez.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I, I'm a big fan of density in housing and smart density where it doesn't fill up our streets with more vehicles. I do like lots of neighbors nearby. And I wanted to make sure that, that I made that clear. But I want to also make sure that our streets stay open and not congested. And, and we, if we put in more density along the transit corridor, it's a fantastic opportunity to also move along this project, the Grand Boulevard project, where El Camino has to be, become more transit and bike lane and also move vehicles along, but just a more multimodal street so that we can have this density and also move people around efficiently without everyone needing to have their own giant vehicle. So those are my main points. The Grand Boulevard Initiative, El Camino, along with all of the density that's coming, which I think is fantastic, as long as we can also keep our streets moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia. And last, we have Elmer Martinez. Elmer, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
My apologies. Good evening, council. I just wanted to convey my comments that I agree with Mr. Tuzman and the folks who are bringing a perspective that you all should be considering more housing on the east side, but also looking at multifamily housing between Laurel and El Camino as well. With the RENA numbers that are being considered for the next four years, you should be just looking at the data that, more housing in that region. So just wanted to throw my perspective in here. And thank you for, the city staff for all the work you're doing. Thank you again.
Thank you, Elmer.
Thank you, Elmer. There are no further hands.
Thank you, Crystal. So we'll move to discussion. Councilmember Rack?
First this time, Madam Mayor. I want to thank all the public for their comments. And I also want to, you know, thank Ron for his comments about this council coming together around housing and that we're finally seeing, you know, things moving that maybe perhaps previous councils weren't as active on. So thank you, Ron, for that comment. I do agree it's been a priority and something we've been working on diligently. And I'm looking forward to the BMR ordinance coming in and for the, for the next steps in this progress. I think this was really helpful to get. And I just wanted to sort of make a comment around John's comments around the affordable housing piece because I agree with you, John, that what the state is, I, I think the RENA process, the way it's laid out is flawed and the state is not really doing their job around affordable housing. And that's where we're, we can build our way out of above-market units, but until the state steps up and provides some, some funding for housing, we're never going to be able to get out of this crisis and be able to get the affordable housing that we need in San Carlos, in the county and in the state. And so, you know, it's frustrating to see that there's sort of this other things around like SB 9, SB 10, and others that are happening when the real crisis and real issues at hand is sort of being ignored and not dealt with. So I appreciate, John, you bringing that up. And I'm hoping that sort of the state will, will look at how they can help us out at the local level with, with affordable housing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to just build on Adam's comments. I'm proud that housing has been a top priority for this council and it has been since day one for us. And I also appreciate that staff has brought this update to us this evening. I think it's really helpful for me to hear what the community is comfortable with regarding height and to see the maps in the staff report of where existing higher-density housing can be increased. And it looks like from what we have heard from staff tonight that there is a reasonable amount of confidence that this plan and the changes we make to zoning will bring about more housing projects, which is great. I know that the jobs coming to the east side of San Carlos has really brought to the fore for many community members, the need for more housing in our community. And I do want San Carlos to be part of the solution to the jobs, housing balance. And I recognize that we need to work on both sides of the equation. For me, what, what struck me in the staff report is the fact that only 16% of the city's land area is zoned for commercial and industrial uses. And also, the commercial and retail sector on our east side produces over 80% of the city's retail sales taxes, as well as skilled labor jobs and products and services for local residents and our region. So we can't have a city that is 100% residential. And I think that jobs and industry on our east side are important. And we need to ensure that there's just an appropriate mix of jobs and housing. And for me, that means housing that is not just studio apartments, but also housing with two and three bedrooms where families can live in our community. The cost of developing housing is high, which is why I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, the 100% affordable housing project in San Mateo, which will cost $170 million to build 225 units. So I am looking for creative solutions to drive the needed housing forward. And so I hope that we can zero in on what is already included in the vision plan, which is the reference to direct provision of affordable housing, meaning that we use the tools we have available to ensure that large developers of commercial space either build or partner with a developer or nonprofit to build the housing to directly address the jobs, housing balance in real time. I also think that it's really important that our housing, our, our work on housing and jobs, and also traffic and circulation for that matter, does not occur in silos and that we have these conversations concurrently and that we're continuing to look holistically at our community. Those are my comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins and then Councilmember Duke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank the, the members of the public who spoke tonight. We heard a variety of, of opinions and it really just highlights how complex and difficult the housing issue is around here. But I would like people to understand that we don't have the luxury of saying, of using the Nancy Reagan strategy of just say no. We just can't say no to development. We just can't say no to housing. We just can't say no to more jobs. Those are happening. We live in a major metropolitan area, as I pointed out before. People need to understand that the, the solutions to this, to the issues that we face are very complex. They're very difficult. Um, and if people really want to change what's going on, the change really needs to happen in Sacramento. You, you would need to elect different leaders, but I would say this, be careful what you wish for. We have a lot of problems that we have had to deal with in, in this town for a long time. Trying to solve the housing issue is just one of them. And if we don't solve it, then we are going to, or if we refuse to solve it, really that's a better way to put it. If we refuse to solve this issue, it will be solved by people who will solve it in a way that is beyond our control. And that's why I say we need to be careful what we wish for. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. And, and I, I also appreciate all the staff's work on, um, you know, it's a very complex issue. And as you do get into it, you do realize the complexities of it. So Ron, I appreciate how you highlight that. Um, and I also really appreciate all the public's, uh, input through our community outreach and this evening. And we need that and we need more of that. Uh, we have a lot of important decisions to make as a city and, and we definitely need to be hearing from, uh, all the various views because these are, uh, very impactful decisions that are going to affect the trajectory of San Carlos for a long time. Uh, but I do really appreciate my colleagues and, and, and this council, uh, we, you know, we are taking housing very seriously and, and I think we are stepping up, uh, to what, uh, is going to be required of us as a city and as, as a, a council. And, uh, Ron, thank you for, uh, painting some of the history on that. Um, uh, I appreciated that. Um, as, as far as density goes, it is a tough issue. I mean, it's, uh, uh, we all, I, I said this many times, uh, talking to folks, you know, I, I love the character and charm of San Carlos. It's been wonderful to my family for, uh, the eighteen years we've lived in town. Um, but I have three children and I have to ask, where can they live someday? And where can, you know, their teachers live and our firemen and other essential workers? So in my view, that's really the crux of it. Uh, we all love San Carlos and, and what it offers, uh, but we have to be a vibrant welcoming community as well. And I want to know, where can my kids live someday? That's, uh, still an open question, I think, for, uh, far too many of us here in town. Um, and so I, I, I'm glad we're taking this seriously. And as we think about density, the question is, you know, in my view, where? And, uh, I hope SB nine does not become a, a, a significant distraction in us having these conversations. Uh, because I think we do have a lot of areas where density is warranted. I, I, I really like staff's work on El Camino and elsewhere in our core. Um, I think there are opportunities on the east side as well, and I hope we, uh, continue to be open minded and, and consider that. Uh, because as we've looked at these numbers and we just see how aggressive the arena numbers are, and yet they still fall very short. Uh, we historically have achieved nine percent as a percentage of, uh, uh, essential housing versus market rate. Uh, maybe that'll be fifteen percent if we keep doing things as we've been doing them. Uh, well, our, you know, to keep up with what our regional process has determined we need, that needs to be fifty percent. Um, so, uh, we should all accept that as the significant challenge that it is and really, uh, uh, hold that thought as we consider these new policies. You know, we're doing the right things. We're updating the, the below market rate, uh, ordinance. So, you know, we're going to take a hard look at how we do that. We're in the middle of that, um, east side vision plan. I, I, you know, I think housing has to be an element of that plan for us to, uh, get anywhere, uh, near these numbers. Um, and, um, uh, and, and then just, uh, I think staff was looking for perhaps a little bit of guidance from us on if we're comfortable with that buffer number. And I would just say even with that, that, that fifty percent affordable to market rate, that is with a thirty percent buffer. So, uh, you know, I'll just throw it out there. We might want to consider going with a higher buffer than that in the hopes of ending up with, uh, uh, more than fifteen percent how, uh, affordable housing and closer to the fifty percent. So just, uh, um, very, very important issue and, and I'm glad this council takes it seriously. And I'm glad that the public is, is as involved as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the rest of the council comments this evening and the public participating in the discussion. Um, I, you know, uh, since I've lived in San Carlos, I've seen it, um, changed dramatically. Um, and, um, I recognize and appreciate, um, you know, the change is difficult. Uh, the circumstances of our economy bring both, uh, you know, great opportunity, but also great challenges. Um, I know and believe that by working together, we'll be able to, uh, figure this very complicated situation out. Um, I believe the, um, comments made about, you know, the financing and the economics, um, I have, you know, I believe for a long time that that is really at the root of all of this. And, um, I think, you know, continuing to, you know, work across the community to understand what conditions we can create to, uh, make the creation of affordable housing viable is an important one, uh, that I'd like us to continue to have. Um, in my recent conversations with people who serve our community, it's not lost on me that, um, there's actually very few members of our public safety team, both police and fire, uh, that live here in San Carlos. Um, if there is a major disaster, um, they will have to come from a long distance, um, often, um, over a bridge, uh, and, uh, several hours' drive from our community. Uh, it's not lost on me that in our schools, um, which are great, uh, the turnover with respect to our teachers is often driven by the cost of, of living in our community. Um, and our civil servants are also, um, challenged with the ability to live, uh, in the community within which they work. Um, I want to be a part of a community where, um, the people that, um, I, I count on daily, um, for my cup of coffee or, or dry cleaning, um, or public safety, uh, can afford to live in our community. And, um, I would, as we move forward in this process, I'd like to challenge ourselves, um, you know, to consider, uh, that jobs forecast for our local community and whether or not, uh, those target numbers for housing units are aggressive enough. Um, and, um, I also, uh, appreciate the concept that was forwarded earlier, uh, that we also look at the mix and breadth of the types of housing, not just focus on studio and one bedroom apartments. Um, we, um, I, I would like the, the housing stocks to work for, um, everyone regardless of their journey and, in their respective life. And we know that, that their needs for housing change over the course of their life. So, um, with that, um, again, I very much appreciate the conversation and I, I do look forward to future discussions on this and hope staff will come back with, uh, frequent updates, uh, for us on this, uh, as it is very important, um, to council and the community. Um, so with that, um, I propose a ten minute break. Are there any objections? All right.
None whatsoever.
All right. Seeing none, um, we'll be back at nine thirty-eight. Thank you so much, everybody.
Crystal, if we can resume our discussion?
Yes, we're ready to be on our side.
Terrific. Okay. Uh, so the next item is, um, item eight B, study session, receive a presentation on Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, short-lived climate pollutants, organic waste methane emissions reduction. And, uh, giving the presentation this evening is, uh, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Uh, and I understand he has a number of, of people with him this evening. So welcome, uh, welcome, Stephen.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Uh, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So tonight's study session, what we're going to really talk about is Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. And essentially this bill is, uh, was established to combat short-lived climate pollution mainly from, uh, methane emissions, uh, mainly from food waste or the disposal of food waste, yard waste and paper products. So tonight you're actually going to receive two presentations. The first presentation is, uh, will be given by Ms. Tracy Webb from Cal Recycle. And she will describe really at a high level the requirements of the bill. Uh, with Ms. Webb, uh, there's, uh, Kennedy and Corinna Miller will be present to help answer any questions. The second, um, presentation will be actually presented by Mr. TJ Carter from Rethink Waste, who will actually describe what the eleven member agencies of SB W A, uh, together will tackle the requirements of, of SB thirteen eighty-three. And also with TJ is Mr. Joe Amoriana as well as, uh, Julia Al. So one of the last things I wanted to just mention is this kind of the first of several items that we're going to be bringing back to council uh, over the next few months, uh, to really address some of the requirements of, uh, in this bill, SB thirteen eighty-three. But with that, I'd like to turn this over to Tracy.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us. Um, I'm going to be turning my camera off while I'm presenting. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for inviting us to present on SB thirteen eighty-three. My name is Tracy Webb and I am the city's local assistance and market development liaison. This presentation provides a very high, high-level overview of the requirements for compliance with thirteen eighty-three. Next slide, please. Why is thirteen eighty-three important? Organic waste comprises half of California's waste stream. Food waste comprises thirteen percent of the state's disposed waste. This is all happening while one in five children go hungry every night in California. Next slide, please. SB thirteen eighty-three passed in twenty sixteen as part of California's larger strategy to combat climate change. The law was designed to reduce global warming super pollutants like methane, which is up to eighty-four times more potent than carbon dioxide. Landfills are one of the largest producers of methane in the state. As we know, when organic material breaks down in the landfill, methane is generated. So we need to move away from landfilling organic waste like food, paper and yard waste. Next slide, please. SB thirteen eighty-three sets a statewide target that requires California to reduce organic waste disposal by seventy-five percent and increase edible food recovery by twenty percent by twenty twenty-five. Organic waste is defined broadly in the regulations and includes food waste, paper, cardboard, green waste, organic textiles and carpets, lumber, wood, bio solids, manure and sledges. Cal Recycle collaborated with jurisdictions and other stakeholders over the past three and a half years to complete the regulations that became final November third, twenty twenty. While the regulations take effect in twenty twenty-two, jurisdictions have to plan now so they can be compliant by January first, twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. There are many benefits if we successfully implement California's super pollutant reduction strategy, including environmental benefits such as fighting climate change, improved air quality and less landfill waste, providing millions of meals to Californians without enough to eat and creating thousands of new green jobs. Next slide, please. Here are some key implementation dates. The most important date to note is January first, twenty twenty-two, when the regulations become enforceable. This means starting January first, twenty twenty-two, jurisdictions must have programs in place and Cal Recycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities. In twenty twenty-four, jurisdictions will be required to take enforcement action against non-compliant entities. Next slide, please. This slide provides a brief overview of the program requirements that jurisdictions will be required to adequately staff and resource. We will briefly cover some of these requirements in the next few slides. Jurisdictions will be required to provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. This is what we refer to as automatically providing service or universal service. The resident or business is automatically provided the service rather than subscribing to it. The regulations standardize container colors across the state to be fully implemented by January first, twenty thirty-six and require a jurisdiction to place a label on each new container or lid provided to generators starting January first, twenty twenty-two. Jurisdictions can issue three types of waivers to generators, de minimis, physical space and collection frequency. The regulations also place requirements on residents and commercial businesses. Jurisdictions must contact annual education, I'm sorry, jurisdictions must conduct annual education and outreach to all generators. This includes information on methods for the prevention of organic waste generation, recycling organic waste onsite and sending organic waste to community composting. This also includes information regarding programs for the donation of edible food. Jurisdictions must procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products, compost, renewable gas or electricity. From biomass conversion. Each jurisdiction will have a minimum procurement target based on its population. There are also requirements to purchase recycled content paper and paper products if price and performance is comparable. Cal Recycle will notify jurisdictions of their target prior to January first, twenty twenty-two. Each jurisdiction must plan for adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and edible food recovery. Each county will lead this effort by coordinating with cities, special districts that provide solid waste collection services and regional agencies located within the county. Jurisdictions must monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. Monitoring begins in twenty twenty-two. Jurisdictions must do an annual compliance review of commercial businesses to make sure that they have service. There are contamination monitoring requirements for the contents of the containers. To reduce reporting, jurisdictions are required to maintain records and keep information in an implementation record. Each jurisdiction is required to report to the department annually on its implementation and compliance with the requirements of thirteen eighty-three. Requirements include adopting an ordinance or enforceable mechanism consistent with the regulatory requirements for January first, twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. Thank you. SB thirteen eighty-three extends beyond directing waste management and recycling operations and staff. This slide shows that every department within local government will be affected and have a role to play. Each department will need to understand how SB thirteen eighty-three impacts their work. Jurisdictions should be thinking and planning for the staffing they will need, whether they will task their direct service providers to staff some activities and whether they will contract with other entities such as environmental health inspectors or consultants. Next slide, please. Jurisdictions are responsible to implement edible food recovery programs in their communities. This includes providing education and outreach, assessing capacity of existing edible food recovery and expanding existing infrastructure if necessary. Conducting inspections of tier-one commercial edible food generators and food recovery organizations and services beginning twenty twenty-two. And inspections of tier-two commercial edible food generators beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. SB thirteen eighty-three related inspections of food recovery organizations and food recovery services will be limited to verifying that the record-keeping requirements have been met. Inspections should be at a level rate to adequately determine compliance with the requirements. Annual inspections of each tier-one and tier-two commercial edible food generator is not required. Beginning in twenty twenty-four, jurisdictions must take enforcement action on commercial edible food generators that are out of compliance with the edible food recovery requirements. Next slide, please. Jan, by January first, twenty twenty-two, jurisdictions are required to have an enforcement mechanism or ordinance in place. Between January twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-three, jurisdictions need to identify businesses in violation of the regulatory requirements and provide educational material to those generators. Beginning January twenty twenty-four, Beginning January twenty twenty-four, jurisdictions must take progressive enforcement action against organic waste generators that are not in compliance. The progressive approach allows for notification to the generator and provides time for the generator to comply before penalties are required to be issued by the jurisdiction. Cal Recycle sets a maximum timeframe that a jurisdiction has to issue a notice of violation and issue penalties to a generator. The jurisdiction has the flexibility to develop its own enforcement process within these parameters. An early, robust education program will minimize the amount of enforcement action needed. Also, if the jurisdiction is automatically providing service to its residents and commercial businesses, this further minimizes the need for enforcement actions. Next slide, please. In the case of entities such as public universities, school districts, federal facilities, which are exempt from local solid waste oversight, Cal Recycle will be directly responsible for ensuring compliance. However, jurisdictions are required to provide education and outreach to these entities. Cal Recycle will be evaluating a jurisdiction's compliance, for example, by verifying that all organic waste generators have service, jurisdictions are providing education, jurisdictions are issuing notices of a violation within the correct timeline. Cal Recycle will be establishing a process for conducting jurisdiction audits. The timeline and process will be different than how it is done now. Much of a jurisdiction's existing programs will be integrated into this audit process, so you will not have separate reviews. SB thirteen eighty-three sets a statewide target and not a jurisdiction organic waste diversion target, unlike with AB nine thirty-nine, SB thirteen eighty-three prohibits the jurisdiction target. Due to this structure, the regulations require a more prescriptive approach and establishes state minimum standards. Jurisdictions will have to demonstrate compliance with each of the prescriptive standards rather than a determination of a good faith effort. Under the regulations, if Cal Recycle determines a jurisdiction is violating one or more of the regulations, I'm sorry, requirements, Cal Recycle will provide compliance assistance such as checklists, model tools, and training. Although Cal Recycle may begin penalty enforcement on regulated entities starting January first, twenty twenty-two, the timelines for the enforcement process are not triggered until Cal Recycle issues a notice of violation. Once Cal Recycle determines enforcement actions or penalties are necessary, Cal Recycle will implement the process outlined in SB thirteen eighty-three. Next slide, please. Cal Recycle is helping jurisdictions in a number of ways, including the four model tools. These include Model Franchise Agreement, Model Mandatory Organics Disposal Reduction Ordinance, Model Organic Waste Product Procurement Policy, and Model Edible Food Recovery Agreement. The R three Local Jurisdiction Service Rate Study, which provides guidance on setting organics recycling rates, was made available to jurisdictions in early March. We also have case studies of jurisdictions that have set rates, funded infrastructure, and educated the public and elected officials. A best management practices guidance document for identifying tier-one and two commercial edible food generators, and we released the procurement calculator tool and held an accompanying webinar to help jurisdictions plan and track procurement activities. Other recently published tools include, for regional agencies, we developed model language for amending the JPA to address thirteen eighty-three requirements that the JPA will be taking on. We developed the Organic Waste and Edible Food Recovery Calculator Tools to help with the capacity planning requirements and held a webinar to cover this guidance. We also released a survey tool that jurisdictions can use to gather, excuse me, to gather information from food recovery organizations and services regarding capacity. We developed department-issued waiver forms for jurisdictions that are eligible to apply for a waiver. Cal Recycle will send out a listserv message once they start accepting applications. We developed a new technology review process and application. Cal Recycle will send out a listserv message once they start accepting applications. We have other tools that are scheduled to be released soon. To help jurisdictions with maintaining records onsite, we are developing a model implementation record-keeping tool. We are developing a tool for best management practices for conducting route reviews. We are developing a series of training videos to support and further develop an understanding of the regulation requirements. And Cal Recycle is working with a contractor on the data research for the statewide education campaign. The focus is using community social-based marketing to drive changes in behavior. Our staff is available to help individual jurisdictions with the implementation tools. We can identify funding resources for companies that want to cite or expand their recycling manufacturing operations, and we can answer questions about the regulation. If there are other tools that you need, please let us know. Next slide, please. The city of San Carlos is on its way to implementing a program that will meet SB thirteen eighty-three regulations. We would like to acknowledge San Carlos for working on the following efforts in preparation for twenty twenty-two. Developing an SB thirteen eighty-three ordinance using the Rethink Waste Model Ordinance, reviewing agreement with Rethink Waste to implement SB thirteen eighty-three on behalf of the city, reviewing agreement with the County of San Mateo SMC Office of Sustainability to implement an edible food recovery program, and researching SB thirteen eighty-three recovered organic materials targets with SMC Office of Sustainability and Rethink Waste. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, within your indulgence, I would like to actually have TJ Carter actually do his presentation. I think TJ will actually boil down a lot of things that Ms. Webb had talked about. We'll actually describe a little bit more in detail of what we're planning to do kind of here locally. So if you don't mind, I'd like to have TJ go next.
Please.
Great. Well, hello, everyone. My name is TJ Carter. I'm the Recycling and Compliance Program Manager at Rethink Waste. I will build on the presentation from Cal Recycle and discuss how we are planning for implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three in the Rethink Waste service territory, which includes San Carlos. Next slide. So we are very fortunate enough to have so many great organizations involved. Under SB thirteen eighty-three, jurisdictions are ultimately responsible for compliance, but they may delegate some responsibilities to public or private entities. To implement SB thirteen eighty-three, it is expected Rethink Waste, Recology, the county's Office of Sustainability, and the city will all have a piece of SB thirteen eighty-three. Next slide. For the Rethink Waste service territory, we are pursuing a three-container system for all customers. This approach you may be familiar with at the residential level with blue, green, and black carts for recycling, compost, and landfill. Next slide. So I want to touch on a few of these main SB thirteen eighty-three elements, importance for compliance and implementation, the SB thirteen eighty-three ordinance, enforcement, procurement, collection, and processing, edible food recovery, and then a few items that thread in between these elements. Next slide. Rethink Waste has developed a model ordinance specific to our service territory to support our member agencies on this requirement, though there are areas in the model ordinance that the city will need to complete that is specific to San Carlos. Rethink Waste has hired a consultant who drafted our model ordinance and is available to help you customize your ordinance. And under SB thirteen eighty-three, the ordinance will need to be in place by January one, twenty twenty-two. Next slide. For enforcement, Rethink Waste will conduct outreach and education, help identify and educate non-compliant entities, and will pass along complaints to the jurisdiction. For the city, this includes adopting the ordinance noted in the previous slide, issuing notice of violations, and assessing penalties. There may be the need to hire additional staff or support for the enforcement program. For the edible food recovery program, the county's Office of Sustainability has offered to lead the enforcement for that piece. Next slide. There are two main aspects of procurement. The first part is, under SB thirteen eighty-three, it requires jurisdictions to obtain recycled content paper products, including paper supplies and janitorial supplies, and maintain records for those purchases. The second part is a bit more complicated. Jurisdictions are required to procure recovered organic materials, including compost, mulch, renewable natural gas, or biomass, in amounts based on population size. Before San Carlos, we estimate roughly thirteen hundred tons of compost would be needed to meet this target, and costs could range from one hundred and twenty-one thousand to three hundred and forty-five thousand annually. Rethink Waste and the county Office of Sustainability are researching options to meet these targets in cost-efficient ways. Next slide. Rethink Waste is working to scope new services with Recology for SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. At a high level, we are discussing the additional organic collection, outreach and education, and cost estimates. These changes would be in the form of amendment two to the franchise agreement, and we would anticipate bringing this to our member agencies in the next few months. Next slide. The county's Office of Sustainability has offered to take the lead on the edible food recovery program on behalf of jurisdictions in San Mateo County. Jurisdictions will need to adopt memorandum of understanding with the county's Office of Sustainability for participation. Rethink Waste will support this through targeted outreach and education and capacity-building support. Next slide. And then, at a high level, Rethink Waste has hired contractors to help with its projects, like technical assistance for the model ordinance and developing Recology's scope of services. We will take the lead on record-keeping and reporting requirements and issuing waivers. We've put together a memorandum of understanding outlining all the roles and responsibilities Rethink Waste will take on behalf of our member agencies. Next slide. And then, I'm happy to help answer any questions. And as you've been noted, I'm here with the Rethink Waste Executive, our Executive Director, Joe La Mariana.
Thank you, TJ. Stephen, are there any additional reports or comments from staff?
No, that really concludes, you know, this effort or the presentations, but you know, as kind of as both Tracy and TJ actually have presented, you know, this is a very complex kind of bill and legislation. And as I mentioned earlier, you're going to see us coming back to you on several different items, you know, to kind of get this thing underway, because we do have to have our everything in place by January first of twenty twenty-two. So with that, I think that concludes the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. So we'll take questions from council and then take public comment and then come back to discussion. Are there any members of council who have questions? Councilmember Rack.
Madam Mayor, and thank you to TJ and Tracy for the presentation and Stephen. And it looked like you talked about sort of, you know, there's a certain amount of cost associated with this for the city, potentially hiring as well from the enforcement standpoint. And this may be for Stephen or any of you. So when do we, I know you threw some estimates out, but do we, when do we think we'll have a better sense of when, when we might see those costs come around, that we can kind of prepare for those and sort of be ready as we think through budgeting from the San Carlos side, from the city side?
So, Councilmember Rack, you know, we're still kind of going through the process. A lot of this is, there's a lot of moving parts in regards to the whole bill, right? And so we're still really trying to get a handle on it. Unfortunately, it is coming on very, very quickly, as you can imagine. However, what I can say is, you know, for the county of San Mateo and certainly with Joe and his team, TJ, you know, we're by far well in advance in a lot of other cities within California, you know, where we actually have moved, you know, we're looking at the three bin, three bin cans, and at least we're somewhat familiar. And so we're probably miles ahead of many, many cities. And so, you know, from a positive note, we're still trying to gather that information as far as, you know, what it's going to take. But what I can say is, without kind of the assistance of Rethink Waste and kind of having them take over a lot of the duties, you know, just, just back of the envelope, I was kind of calculating, I would need at least maybe four full-time people, you know, running just this program at least as a minimum, just to run. And that's really not including, you know, some of the enforcement action, but just kind of taking care of that administrative stuff, you know, items that this would require. So this is a real heavy lift for, for all cities. And actually, by going together with Rethink Waste, you know, certainly, we're going to benefit from actually the cost, where we could actually share the costs and share the outreach and education programs that, you know, is a requirement of this bill.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I see Joe La Mariana has his hand up. Joe, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, fellow council members and TAC member Machida. So nice to see everybody here tonight, and thank you for the invitation. I want to support Stephen's comment a moment ago. We're all just getting our hands around this. So as your technical resource, we are trying to present options that allow you to maximize the cost savings and cost-sharing benefits of being part of a joint powers authority. That's one of the, you know, one of the very main reasons that you choose to be part of our agency. So, so we take that very seriously, and we're looking at ways to constantly sort of just, you know, distribute those costs more effectively. I would say, certainly, by the time you guys start putting your budgets together in the mid to late spring for the next fiscal year, the city's probably going to have a better read on that. I can tell you, we're looking at it from the agency's standpoint and the preliminary numbers that we've looked at for our side of the House. So the operating system that handles the entire collection, processing, and sorting, and transportation of the material, we're looking at probably three to seven percent above the normal CPI indicators and adjustments. So right now, we, we benefit by having a fixed-cost contract with Recology and with South Bay Recycling, our two major partners in collecting and handling the materials. And I will say, as a comparative, Stephen was absolutely right. I just got back from an industry meeting on Friday, and I heard the county of Sacramento's implementation plans on this program. And the fact that we already have a three-card system is hugely beneficial already. We're looking at targeting a subset of multifamily dwelling properties and commercial properties that don't currently have it. But in their case, in Sacramento, they're looking at the entire system reboot. They're talking about hiring over thirty people. They're talking about something like twenty to twenty-five new routes, which means that many new trucks, et cetera. They're looking at a rate increase anywhere from twenty-eight to forty-one percent, depending on if they phase it or not. But I mean, that is staggering, staggering. So with that said, I think we, we can feel good about this, that this is kind of in a realm of, you know, something that's, that's, you know, realistic. And we have to remember why we're doing this. There are significant environmental benefits to rerouting this material from landfills where they were identified as super emitters and super concentrated emitters of poisonous gases that contributed greenhouse gas, and taking the material and recovering it and reusing it at a much higher level as a soil amendment and something that's truly beneficial to the community. So those are some, some thoughts along those lines.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Stephen, and Joe for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, just a quick question. So as we look at this model ordinance, and I realize I heard that it'll have to be customized for San Carlos, you know, in kind of the obvious ways, but is there anything less obvious as we've looked at that, that needs to be, you know, anything about our situation in San Carlos, our interpretation of the bill that would have us do any substantive changes from, from the model ordinance?
So, Councilmember Dugan, you know, yes, we have looked at, it really is model ordinance, and the intent really is to kind of cover all eleven agencies. There are certain areas within the ordinance that, you know, we really can't tinker with. It is something that, you know, the attorneys have indicated that, you know, that's must be in the bill in order for us to comply with the thirteen eighty-three. There's some small areas that we might be able to amend slightly. There's some small areas that we might be able to amend slightly or, you know, provide some additional guidance or receive additional guidance from. But there's there's not a lot of areas that we could tinker with, if you will, to really customize, to customize to San Carlos. You know, I think the end goal really is to kind of look at, you know, an ordinance that will cover all of, you know, all of our eleven member agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, it doesn't appear that there's any additional questions from council. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment on this item?
Yes, it looks like we have one hand at the moment. Dimitri, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, my hand must have been raised inadvertently. I don't I don't have any any comments here. I do, one quick comment is for for just the waste. I appreciate the fact that we have a compost bin. Years ago, we were able to order even smaller waste, you know, bucket. It was like really, really tiny, and my family of four, we were like really proud of of only using that. And I'm wondering if we could encourage the the smaller containers for the actual waste. But other than that, I'm sorry if my hand was raised, I'm interested in the carbon emissions discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Thank you. There are no further hands.
Okay, all right, any further discussion on this item?
I just wanted to tell you thank you again for inviting us. We really appreciate it, and if you do have questions in the future, please reach out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just a quick comment, you know, certainly seems like a worthy objective. Mitigating climate change is one of our top goals as a city. It's been that for some time. I share Adam's concerns on on costs, you know, unfunded mandates from Sacramento are, you know, not always fun to deal with. This one, you know, seems worthy, and and I'm optimistic that that it will further help our climate change mitigation efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, I see you had another comment to make.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to say thank you very much, and I want to acknowledge the leadership that Board Member and Councilmember Rack contributes to our agency. We're thrilled to have him very involved, and he adds value at every level. The same can be said with Tac Member Machida. And I know it all happens with the leadership of City Manager Malpe as well. So we want to thank all all of those individuals for investing the time to make our agency go and represent everyone's interest there. So good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And I see Kenneth E. from CalRecycle has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and distinguished council. On behalf of CalRecycle, I just want to share our comments. We greatly appreciate the efforts with the jurisdiction, the county, as well as your in partnership with Rethink Waste, the progress that is being made and the progressiveness with moving forward for Rethink thirteen eighty-three. We see it across the state, and as mentioned, there are a variety of places jurisdictions are at in terms of moving forward and being positioned to implement. And fortunately, your jurisdiction in its partnership with Rethink Waste is positioned very nicely. So I just want to let you know on behalf of CalRecycle, we really appreciate those efforts. We remain available. You mentioned the funding piece. As we find information about resources that are potentially available to tap into, Tracy is working closely within that discussion to shed light on those resources. And I just didn't want to go unmentioned that there are potentially some resources that can be tapped into, and we will make sure that when they are available, we work closely with you to see what can be done to potentially tap into those. Thanks again.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation this evening, and I also want to thank council again for their early action they took. We do now have compost bins downtown, which was inspired by SB thirteen eighty-three. So got a lot of positive feedback from our community members about that. So looking forward to doing more work here. All right, well, thank you very much for joining us and look forward to working with all of you on this. And as next steps, we'll move into item nine A, a public hearing on consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan and Addendum Number One to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report. Before we go here, though, I do believe we may need a motion to extend the length of the meeting.
Madam Mayor, go ahead, run.
I was just going to say, so move to eleven o'clock.
I'm not hearing a second.
I think we're going to need more time than that, unfortunately, so.
I was being optimistic.
All right, we can always keep pushing it back, so.
All right, I was thinking you wanted to go for ten forty-five, but all right, eleven, eleven o'clock. Crystal, do you need to call the roll for this?
Yes. I have Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rack.
Yes.
And May Pramaloha.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. All right, and I think speaking tonight is going to be Adam Locar, Management Analyst and Sustainability Specialist. Welcome, Adam.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. We'll keep this presentation to fifteen minutes, and so we can save time for for questions and discussion and get through it quickly. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Adam Locar, I'm a Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. Also joining me today are Tammy Seal and Eli Crispie from Placeworks, our consultants on this project. We're here to give you a presentation on the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan for possible adoption. Here are some of the other members on the project team, Teri Peterson on the city side, Trina Wilson, Jacqueline Protsman, and Jessica Robbins on the Placeworks side. And next one, please. So the CMAP, or Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, is an update and expansion to the two thousand nine Climate Action Plan, and it ensures the city remains consistent with state regulations related to greenhouse gas reductions. So the plan includes greenhouse gas reduction goals going out through the years twenty thirty and twenty fifty with updated inventories and forecasts and identify strategies to achieve those targets. In addition, this plan goes a little bit further and recognizes the potential climate change impacts and vulnerabilities in the community, and also identifies strategies to support climate adaptation and resilience. The CMAP also provides an implementation and monitoring program to guide staff in executing the strategies and includes an environmental review that's consistent with CEQA. Here's the the layout of the document. Executive summary kind of provides an overview. The introduction describes the purpose, regulatory framework, and how the plan was prepared. The greenhouse gas emissions chapter and vulnerability to climate change chapter kind of discusses the current current conditions, the greenhouse gas emissions reductions pathway, and adaptation strategy chapters look at the strategies that we can deploy to reduce emissions and adapt to climate change, and then it finishes with the implementation strategy. Next slide. We began this project last year, focusing initially on technical analysis in the winter. Moving into the spring, we started actually developing draft strategies. And through the summer, now we've been actually preparing the plan. And throughout this project, we tried to provide opportunities for community engagement through different means to ensure that the CMAP is representative of the values and expectations of our community. So phase three is where we find ourselves now. We released the the public review draft CMAP back in June. The city council had an opportunity to review this draft version during a study session at the June twenty eighth council meeting and provided feedback. The project team also presented to the Planning Commission in August, where the commission also provided comments and unanimously adopted a resolution recommending that the city council also adopt the CMAP. Comments from both the the city council study session, the planning commission meeting, and various public comment that we've received have been incorporated into the the CMAP before you this evening. Next slide. And with that, I'll actually hand things over briefly to Eli Crispie with Placeworks.
Thank you, Adam. In the CMAP document, there is a discussion of the individual strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and achieve climate adaptation. This is how they are laid out in the document. At the top is a strategy language itself. In the case of the greenhouse gas reduction policies, the the level of greenhouse gas reductions achieved in twenty thirty and twenty fifty is directly below that, and that's given what we consider to be feasible feasible levels of community participation, which are described in the technical appendix to the CMAP. Below that are the specific action items to implement the strategy. And then at the bottom are co-benefits, and these are additional benefits of importance to the community that are not directly related to greenhouse gas reductions. Since the study session back in June, the team has made some responses, personal changes in response to council's comments at that time. We have updated the job numbers to include the large increase in jobs that is expected as part of the east side development. There is more language in the CMAP about the east side planning efforts. There are also more details in the CMAP about how greenhouse gas reduction strategies and climate adaptation strategies should be prioritized. And we have clarified why the all electric reach code is not treated as an existing action, even though it is already being enforced. Next slide, please. We have also added some more language around the connection between the housing supply and greenhouse gas emission reductions, as has been discussed earlier this evening. And there is some more language around improving evacuation routes in the community. We have also made a number of amendments to the strategies themselves. These are relatively minor, but they do include adding new implementation actions where appropriate and refining existing actions and existing strategies to better emphasize and clarify some of the topics that council members discussed at that time. Next slide, please. The CMAP with these revisions went before the planning commission last month. The commissioners wanted the project team to make a few changes that included clarifying some additional points. There were adjustments to the formatting to make the document more readable. And we also provided some additional information on the topic of co-benefits that planning commissioners had wanted to see. In response to the comments that were raised by the planning commission members, we have made some changes to the CMAP document. This is included in your packet for this evening, and this is just a list of some of those specific changes. The CMAP does qualify as a project for the purpose of the California Environmental Quality Act. The project team did prepare an addendum to the San Carlos General Plan Environmental Impact Report, the EIR, for the purposes of the CMAP's environmental review. The addendum finds that the CMAP would not result in any new significant environmental impacts, nor that it would substantially increase the severity of any significant impacts that are covered in the general plan EIR. And with that, I will turn it back to Adam to wrap us up. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. And as for next steps, pending council's approval, city staff can begin implementing the plan, implementing the CMAP. The CMAP does include an implementation plan that will guide staff in our efforts, and we can return for for request for funding to carry out the strategies as appropriate. We can begin by working on some of the the near term strategies with really high greenhouse gas reduction potential that that those that focus on energy conservation, building electrification, transition to electric vehicles, and increasing composting, as we've heard about this evening, just to name a few of those examples. Next slide, please. So the staff recommendation for you this evening is to adopt a resolution that adopts the the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan and associated addendum to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report. Next slide. And that concludes our presentation, and we are happy and available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you so much, Adam, I appreciate it. So being that this is a new business item, we will now move to questions, followed by a public comment, come back for council comment discussion before any motion or a second is taken. So without any members of council have any questions for Adam or staff? So I'll I'll start. So this past weekend, I served on the executive committee from Peninsula Clean Energy and also the Board of Directors, and it was our annual strategic retreat. And during the course of that conversation, we not only reiterated our goal of ensuring that we provide clean energy to the twenty cities and townships throughout the county within San Mateo County on a time coincident basis by twenty twenty-five. We also discussed Governor Newsom's recent ask of agencies to see whether or not it's viable to bring carbon neutrality up from twenty forty-five to the year of twenty thirty-five. Now, mind you, twenty forty-five is twenty-four year time horizon that sort of kicks the problem down to the next generation yet again. As a board, we asked staff to move forward with that more aggressive goal, and they'll come back with a report. And I wanted to better understand, Adam, from your perspective and Locar and staff, what the feasibility might be in in our case to take a look at that that possibility. Thank you.
Yeah, great question. So the the governor, yeah, has has requested the Air Resources Board and the Public Utilities Commission look at that carbon neutrality goal. I do want to clarify, carbon neutral doesn't mean, you know, zero carbon. It means that any remaining emissions are are negated through the purchasing of carbon offsets. That's, you know, invade involves paying another entity to remove carbon from the atmosphere, like restoring a section of forest in another country or something like that. And it's likely that the state will will have to rely pretty heavily on on carbon offsets to achieve its current targets and any potential more aggressive targets. Through the the development of the CMAP, the project team, we always look for opportunities to make, you know, deeper carbon reductions, kind of reflecting the urgency that we heard from the community. And we we heard through outreach efforts, you know, we went to the community and asked what types of actions people wanted the city to take, the community wanted the city to take to address climate change. And we saw support for bold, aggressive actions, and those are included in this plan. But we went to quantify those actions, you know, based on scientific based assumptions and the best available guidance and studies. We we found that there's a reduction pathway towards meeting the, you know, the state targets of the forty percent reduction by twenty thirty and eighty percent by twenty fifty, but not to exceed those targets. As a CEQA certified plan, the CMAP must, you know, be able to prove that these targets in the document are technically feasible. So that it would be challenging to revisit those targets to make them make them more aggressive. That that being said, we are, you know, we're operating under known policy and technology solutions. It's likely that other opportunities will arise in the future that will allow us to push beyond these targets as we've done in the past. So recognizing that, we have since we last presented to you, we did add language in chapter two of the CMAP to support taking those opportunities and that that these targets don't need to be viewed as a ceiling and that we can we can certainly look for for opportunities to push beyond them and and support the the state's more aggressive goals if those do end up getting adopted.
Thank you, Adam, I appreciate it. All right, I don't see any further hands from council, so at this point, we'll move to public comment. Crystal, are there members of the community who wish to make a comment on this item?
Yes, we have four at the moment. First up is Dashal Leeds. You should be able to unmute.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. We're in strong support of the CMAP adoption tonight. We really appreciate the hard work of city staff, consultants, council members, commissioners, and community members who have been instrumental in the creation of this document. While we believe the overall targets could be stronger, we simultaneously believe that the actual measure language within the CMAP is really, really strong. We also appreciate the modifications that staff has made to this draft, particularly the language in documents pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight, which they talked about earlier, which recognizes that the city can work to exceed the current GHG targets. So we really, really encourage this council to continue to direct and support staff to work as aggressively as possible on these CMAP measures and ultimately exceed the current CMAP targets. I think you've got some really good material here to work with, so we're excited to support the city in continuing to aggressively reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dashal. Next up is Kathleen Goforth, followed by Dimitri.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Goforth. I'm resident of San Carlos, and I'd like to second the comments that were just made by Dash Leeds and also express my appreciation to the staff and consultants for all the work they've done to prepare the Climate Mitigation Adaptation Plan. There's some good commitments and a lot of great ideas in this plan to actually achieve the projected greenhouse gas emissions. Those commitments and good ideas need to be put into action soon. So I'm hoping this doesn't just become a ideas need to be put into action soon. So I'm hoping this doesn't just become a document on a shelf. His implementation is what really counts. One thing I'd like to highlight is that when you look at the greenhouse gas emission reductions associated with each of the plan's strategies, it becomes very clear just how tremendously beneficial it will be to electrify not only transportation, but also our existing buildings, which currently use a lot of that short-lived climate super pollutant methane that you heard about earlier this evening. For this reason, I especially appreciate the commitment in Strategy Five to consider in 2022 adopting local building code amendments to require gas space and water heaters to be replaced at the end of their life with electric models. I think that'll be a very important step. I do encourage, as Dash should, being as aggressive as possible, exceeding the targets if we can. So thank you to everyone who worked on the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. I encourage the council to adopt the plan and act on it in accordance with the urgency of the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, next up is Dimitri, followed by Suzanne Emerson.
Yes, hi. Can folks hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, this is the first time I saw this report in the council packet, and I took a quick look at it. And one thing that I think is a bit of an elephant in the room here is I didn't see any study on the carbon emissions that the San Carlos Airport produces. And I don't know if this plan addresses that. And the reason I bring this up is in a very, in a recent study by the Transport and Environment Group in Europe, they talk about how private jets have an outsized role in carbon emissions. Aviation is already one of the most carbon-intensive modes of transport, and the private plane section of travel is without any peer the most carbon-intensive activity that anyone can engage in. As an example, in just one single hour, a single private jet emits two tons of carbon, whereas the average person in Europe emits eight tons over the course of an entire year. So this is an unparalleled climate impact. And so, you know, my one question is, we have an airport within the city limits. If we're addressing climate change, we need to look at that. Private jets are also used for very short trips, which compounds the carbon emissions. They're, in fact, five to 14 times more polluting than commercial planes per passenger. And one astounding fact from a study is just 1% of people cause 50% of global aviation emissions. I mean, that's, think about that. 1% of people cause 50% of global aviation emissions. So if we're talking about climate change, I think we have to look at the airport and looking at how to reduce that. There's one other small thing.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Okay. I also wanted to talk about lead exposure to the children in San Carlos. So I can table that discussion, but that's also something that we need to look.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Okay, next up is Suzanne Emerson, followed by Debbie.
Good evening. This is Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos Green. We would like to thank staff and the consultants who conducted many community outreach opportunities in order to craft the CMAP, and we thank city council for encouraging the creation of strong CMAP elements. The CMAP contains mitigation elements that are expected to be impactful, especially the elements that move towards a mitigation of natural gas equipment and support the transition to electric transportation. We look forward to robust implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, and last up is Debbie. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much to staff for such an excellent draft report. I was unable to view the final report, but in the draft reports, it did indicate that they recommended at least a 25-foot setback from the creeks in town. And I hope that the city planning department and city council will look to achieve at least that amount of setback, or hopefully increase the amount of setback as so much construction goes on in the commercial section and in the area along Pulgas Creek and other creeks. If we have a climate mitigation adaptation plan that recommends setbacks, but exemptions are given for new construction, then that sort of defeats the purpose. So thank you for taking that into consideration as you move forward with plans for our community. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. And that was our... Debbie, are you raising your hand again? Okay, that was our last speaker. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great. Now, we'll move on to council comment discussion.
Madam Mayor, before we do that, I think you need a motion to close the public hearing, which I still move.
Okay.
Again.
All right, Crystal, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rack.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
And Mayor Palma Lohe.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Collins, for the prompt. All right, council discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Why don't we start with Vice Mayor McDowell, and then we'll go to Councilmember Dugan, and then Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I appreciate staff's work and all of the iterations of this report, and I appreciate the public's feedback. I think that this report really reflects a lot of the input from the community over this process, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that we have 33 GHG reduction strategies. I think they're really broad, broad spectrum of strategies, from education to building codes to improving our own city facilities, and the recycled water, I think, is very innovative. I appreciate that we have performance metrics in the plan, and I also really liked the implementation table with timeframes and resource needs. I think that's going to help us track our progress and plan out funding, and I'm looking forward to taking action on this plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan, and then Councilmember Rack.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I agree with what Sarah had to say. I'm glad to see so many good, meaty things that we can engage with as a council now that we have gonna set this plan. We've worked hard on it. I appreciate staff's effort and the consultants we've engaged. And my perception to the process is that this is a strong plan, and I'm glad to hear the Sierra Club chime in this evening and confirm that we're taking a good action here. And I would just point out that, you know, in climate change, it's, the mitigation of that has been one of our clear goals as a city. So, you know, this is right in line with that, obviously, and, you know, couldn't be more important as we all watch climate change literally before our eyes, which is unsettling at best. And I would just point out, I think it's appropriate that we are, I believe, adopting this plan this evening as we previously had a robust discussion on housing. I'll just point out that transportation continues to be the number one emitter in our county. And I just know, you know, when we talk about jobs, housing balance, I would just encourage all of us to remember, that's really also a climate change mitigation notion as well, because when we're out of balance, that's what has folks driving dozens and dozens of miles a day and commuting and really generating all those emissions out on 101 and 280. So our housing discussion, I actually think, is probably what we can most impact as a council is moving our city in a direction where people can live without being so car-dependent. That balance can allow people not to commute long distances, but even as we think about mixed use and creating mixed-use dynamic neighborhoods where someone can live, work, and play without getting in their car and take care of their day and all the amenities they need, and really becoming less car-dependent, I do think, is one of the most important things we can do as a council to enact this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to reiterate some of the comments from my colleagues, but also just to thank staff and Placeworks for their support and the public. And I know the planning commission has weighed in on this a couple of times as well, and all the work done by my colleagues here. And then I just wanted to sort of, I'm looking forward to supporting this, and this is a great plan, and I'm excited about going to the next stage of implementation and sort of as we look at sort of how we put this into place and to action, that I guess I would just encourage that staff, that we continue to look at this, that the document becomes a living document. We continue to get updates and understand kind of what's working, what's not working, where the council can provide extra support to help make sure this works and we help to meet our goals. So look forward to working with everyone here over the next, hopefully, several years as we put this into action. And thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I just want to lend my perspective. I want to compliment Adam and the team, Adam Locar and the team for pulling this together. It contains many bold ideas. I am aligned with the public comment around making sure that we take swift action and do so quickly. As part of the discussion that we had in Peninsula Clean Energy this weekend, we learned that the ROI that is really most significant is building and moving us towards electrification. Transportation is obviously very important, but in terms of return on investment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, those building electrification codes are really important to us. And I also commend the plan for its commentary with respect to the various partnerships. We can't do this alone, so working with the subject matter experts across the county and the region, I think, will be really instrumental, as well as with the community. So I'm very much in support of this. I'm very proud of this. I'm so glad that council decided to make this a key priority that we'll work on, that we'll work on it into the future, and I look forward to taking actions quickly. So looking forward to those budget proposals coming forward. All right. So if there's no further comments, Crystal, can you call the roll?
Madam Mayor, I would like to move to adopt a Resolution 2021 dash...
94.
A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos adopting the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan and Addendum Number One to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report.
Thank you. A second? Is there a second? All right. The second from Vice Mayor McDowell. All right. And Crystal, now can you call the roll? I'm so anxious to get this passed. I just wanted to skip closing of the public comment and the motion altogether. So, Crystal?
Okay, Councilmember Rack.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
And Mayor Palma Lohe.
Yes. Okay, all right. Thank you. And that brings us to our next item, which is agenda setting. Does any member of the council have any proposals for future agenda items this evening? All right, seeing none. That moves us to item 11, adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion tonight. We got a lot of really great work done. Thank you to staff and members of the community for participating in creating our community. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.